Okay, so we're ready to start. First, I would like to acknowledge, we acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is unceded Mi'kmaq territory, called order. And just before I do proceed from there, I'd like to recognize that World Kidney Cancer Day, the International Kidney Cancer Coalition has declared Thursday, June 15, 2023, to be World Kidney Cancer Day. Kidney Cancer Canada is a national community of patients, caregivers, and health professionals who work to provide every Canadian touched by kidney cancer with support, education, and advocacy for their care pathways and treatment options. Kidney Cancer Canada is the only Canadian national charitable patient and caregiver organization solely focused on kidney cancer. So in recognition of World Kidney Cancer Day, the city of Charlottetown, City Hall Tower will be illuminated in green on Thursday, June 15. Okay. So, any declarations of conflict of interest? None? Okay. Approval of agenda? Now, I know I do have councillor McKinnon, he did send me an email. Do you want to ask your question, councillor McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to request, on the agenda, if we can move 6.10 up to the start of 6.01, and that's just to accommodate staff to leave for an event off-island. They're leaving tonight.
Any issue with that? Good. Councillor Twill?
I'd like to request, Parks and Recreation report moved up, the manager has another commitment.
Okay, and so that'll come up from 6.7? 6.7? So 6.10 will be 6.1, and 6.7 will be 6.2? Okay, councillor Beck?
No, you go with the agenda now.
Okay. Okay, so is that okay to approve the agenda? So councillor McKinnon, you'll be first, followed by councillor Twill, and then it will proceed on to planning, environment, sustainability, strategic priorities, and so forth. Okay, perfect. Okay, adoption of the minutes. So I have two sets of minutes. Regular meeting, May 8, 2023, special meeting, May 30, 2023. Motion to move, motion to move by councillor Ramsay, seconded by councillor McKinnon, all those in favor? Okay, business arising from the minutes. Okay, councillor Beck.
Thank you, your worship. I think my comments today are kind of more general in nature, and it's, it kind of centers around, I guess, how we conduct business in the chamber is kind of my general concern. In the six months I've been here, I've had some observations of some situations that have caused me concern, I've had discussions, I know with you, your worship, I've had some discussions with CAO Eleanor as well, too, and it centers largely around decorum. And I would, I think as a general rule, I think we owe it upon ourselves to, I guess, improve our decorum in the chamber. And it's something that, you know, it's not an isolated incident, it's not one particular incident per se, it's kind of, I've seen it on different occasions, and I think for us as councillors, as leaders in our positions, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to conduct our affairs with a high degree of respect, and for not only the, our fellow councillors, but for our professional staff, and more importantly, I guess, for our citizens, too, who are looking for us to be leaders in that regard. And I think it's something that we, if we're moving forward as a group and as a council, I think that is something that has to be front and center in terms of our actions and how we carry ourselves in here, not only in the chamber, but at regular council meetings, at special council meetings, committee meetings, whatever it may be. Because I think people expect us to be better, and I think we should strive to do better and to be better, not only for ourselves and for our own functioning, but for everyone around us, too. So it's just kind of a, I guess, an observation on my part, and I'm speaking for me, and I, it's, I guess it's kind of a request or a plea, or a, an encouragement for us to keep that in mind when we are conducting our affairs here, that we are public servants. And I think if we're going to be doing that, I think we have to be serving our public in an exemplary manner. And so, just kind of a request, maybe, to keep that front and center as we move forward. Thank you.
Well, said there, councillor Beck, and I think that decorum is also not only in this chamber, but what we do out in the public is that, as public officials, there are many eyes on us all the time, so we have to keep that in mind, and our behavior and what we say is always being checked, rechecked, and then if someone wants to put it on social media, it becomes another story. So I appreciate your sincerity and your openness on making this chamber and our role as councillors, and as members of council and staff to always project an image of professionalism. Thank you. Councillor Matar.
Just go there. I just wanted to just to say thank you to councillor Beck for those words, and, you know, and I fully support that statement, and I do think we can and will do better as a group and come in as a cohesive unit. We're always, you know, we are going to agree, we're going to disagree, and we will have some healthy debate. But I think we can do that in a very respectful manner. So thank you very much for bringing that forward, councillor Beck.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship, and through, through the, through your worship, too, councillor Beck, I want to thank you for highlighting this this evening, and I'm sure that, not to speak for the other councillors here in the chamber, but I'm sure we can all agree that doing better is, is always an everyday thing, and we should strive for that, and I thank you for that. I thank Justin for, councillor Matar, for speaking to this as well. And, you know, as the deputy mayor, I can certainly be here to remind folks and be part of that, too, and maybe a recommendation that we do a little onboarding around Robert's rules and, and decorum here in the chamber. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yankoff, councillor McLaren, councillor McLaren.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Again, I'd like to just support councillor Beck in his, his observations and comments. I know, I know at times, you know, the world we live in and operate in this environment, things can get emotionally charged at times, and I just think that, you know, as councillor Beck laid it out, I'm certainly going to do my best personally as a councillor to try and follow those, you know, to follow those guidelines and decorum, and I think if we can all, all kind of take, take pass to what councillor Beck's saying, I think it'll serve the council well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McLaren. Councillor Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Great to see that it was brought up. Long time overdue. I think we've talked about it a few times before. For me, it's, and I'm glad councillor Beck brought it up, it's great to bring it up. I think there has to be some rules or what have you, when it gets out of hand. I think everybody knows what we're talking about here, it's been all over social media, but it's not the first time that that type of meeting has happened. And I think it's great to talk about it, it's great to bring it up, but now let's put some substance to it, let's put some teeth to it, because it should not happen, and usually in these roles that we're in, we're professionals and we're supposed to act like professionals. So I think a little more conversation, a little more, some rules around the
Rules of engagement.
Engagement, the way, the way some of these meetings are being run. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Can we move on to reports? Okay, councillor McKinnon, do you want to present your report? I know that Wayne Long is here from the staff. You want to go ahead? Just put your mic on. Okay.
Thank you, your worship. The Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee met on May 18, minister included in your package. The Arts Advisory Board was recently appointed and will hold their first meeting on June 16. There's no resolutions for consideration, however, I'll offer a few departmental highlights at this time. Staff recently attended UPEI's Faculty of Sustainable Design, Engineering Design Expo under the Economic Development portfolio. Staff have been collaborating with Innovation PEI with respect to advancing the CAN Export Project file. This project will allow the city to prospect efforts around foreign direct investment in defined needed areas around the capital city. Staff have been busy with a number of projects, most recently positioning Charlottetown's growth and attraction efforts at the FCM Conference and Trade Show, Sports Tourism Canada, Sports Events Congress, Event Atlantic Summit, and Atlantic Venue Partnership. The City Hall Visitor Information Centre is now open for the season, Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and staffing will be at full capacity between June 26 and September 1. Capital City Canada Day program was recently released and will feature traditional Canada celebrations, along with a barge-based fireworks display. The city will also be featured as one of the three, of three remote cities in Canadian Heritage's National Evening Production, airing live on CBC and Radio Canada. The Celebrate Canada period will also include the recently announced international soccer match between Halifax Wanderers FC U23 and Germany's Holstein Keel, Kyle, U23 on July 5, and a Canadian Forces Snowbirds airshow on the Charlottetown waterfront on July 9. With the arrival of summer, Charlottetown will be alive with festivals and events weekly. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them or direct them to Mr. Long.
Okay. Thank you, councillor McKinnon. Councillor Twill?
Thank you, councillor McKinnon, for your report. As you can recall, at the last committee meeting, I brought up the issue of the event grounds, that's currently being underutilized, as well as an opportunity for island musicians, artists, entertainers, to be able to have a venue that they truly can call their own. Currently, that doesn't exist in the city of Charlottetown when it comes to an outdoor venue. And I would like to, to bring this up publicly, because there's definitely a need, and I think we should be working with this particular group. I've had just informal discussions with CADC, they support the initiative as well. So I brought it up at the committee level, I bring it up here because CADC comes under terms of reference for economic development, tourism and events. So I'd like to discuss further at a future committee meeting, to see what we can do to, to engage, to embrace the island artists and musicians. We have a facility that's, that's been constructed a number of years ago, sitting there dormant, it's not being used, it's underutilized. And I don't know why we don't seize that opportunity in partnership with CADC and island musicians, island artists, island entertainers, so that there is predictability, so that there is consistency, so that they can have access to that facility six and seven days a week. This is a golden opportunity to make fantastic use of that facility, and I think we should use all resources here at City Hall to explore that. So councillor McKinnon, I, again, I want to reiterate what I tried to reiterate at the standing committee meeting, and I look forward to working with you and potential partners in making this venue a reality. Thank you.
Councillor McKinnon?
Thank you, councillor Twill, for that, and I'll be in discussions with the manager, Wayne Long, before the next committee meeting, and try to get some answers for you.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just curious, I noticed for Canada Day, there's three cities that are going to be televised for CBC. What are the other two that are going to be part of that, just out of curiosity? Thanks.
Refer that question to manager Long.
Mr. McKinnon, sorry. Mr. Long?
Your worship, through the chair, Charlottetown is one of three cities as a part of the National Canada Day CBC broadcast. The other two cities are Calgary and Vancouver. So it's a pretty big accolade for Charlottetown to be part of that national program.
Good. Did you want my laptop? Do you want my laptop?
It's okay, I'm between these guys and my phone.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
I forgot my computer.
Okay. Thank you, councillor McKinnon. Thank you, Mr. Long. Good luck in St. John's or Corner Brook. Okay. Councillor Twill, your report is next, and we have Mr. Frank Quinn here, who's manager of Parks, Recreation and Leisure. Go ahead, sir.
Report is in your package. I think what we'll do, as we'll move to the resolutions, and if there's any questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to go with the resolutions there, councillor Twill? Okay. CAO Eleanor, can you read the first one, please?
Thank you, your worship. Parks, Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee, resolution number one, moved by councillor Twill, seconded by councillor Bernard. Be it resolved that as per the recently advertised tender for Simmons Sports Center Arena and Pool Replacement, tender package six, Community Building Arena Interior and Site Works Package, the city accepts the low bid of $12,592,000 plus applicable taxes from Fitzgerald and Snow, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute any standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Councillor Twill, do you want to add some commentary to that resolution, sir?
As you can see, the construction is well underway for the Simmons project. The last resolution for this project is before council this evening, which relates to community building, arena interior, and site works. With respect to some background information, I beg your indulgence, city of Charlottetown recently advertised tender for Simmons Sports Center Arena and Pool Replacement, tender package six, Community Building Arena Interior Site Work Package, which was posted on April 12, closed on June 1, 2023. Here's a summary of the main scope of work. Supply and install all structural steel and steel decking to complete the front addition. Supply and install all exterior and interior doors, windows, and door hardware for the entire building, including the arena. Supply and install all interior partitions, finishes, millwork, dressing, and changing rooms, interior, exterior stairs, guardrails, handrails, precast bleachers, bleacher seats, and all other elements to complete, enclose, and finish the whole building. Supply and install all electrical communications, audiovisual services for the entire building. Supply and install all mechanical plumbing, sprinklers, propane services, and fixtures for the entire building. Supply and install power diesel generators and complete exterior work, including site grading, sodding, concrete paving, concrete pads, asphalt, lighting, new fire hydrants, bike racks, paintings for lane and parking, and provide fireproofing of all steel elements and all other fire-related requirements for the whole building. Just to, just to try to capture the feedback I'm receiving from the community, is that there's a lot of excitement with the, with the construction of this new facility. This facility is not just for the, the young demographics, it's going to be playing hockey and figure skating, and all other sports that are going to take place in this facility. This facility is also for our seniors as well, and that's why we strive to make sure that the walking track is going to be located on the second floor, so there's not going to be any conflict with any of the user groups on the first floor. I think that was a wise decision by city council, and I know a lot of seniors are looking forward, particularly during the winter months, to have that opportunity to utilize that walking track and, and the community facility as well. So if there's any questions, we'll certainly do our best to answer anything that comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Twill. Councillor Bernard?
Questions called.
Questions called. Just a little bit of history, when we built Carey, it was budgeted at $18 million back in 2001, 2002, and at the end of the project, it was $23 million. So that was back in early 2000. Fast forward to 2022, 2023, COVID, post-COVID, whole different economic playing field, so I think we're still doing well when you look at the numbers. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. Okay, do you have another resolution?
Thank you, your worship. Resolution number two, moved by councillor Twill, seconded by councillor Matar. Be it resolved that the city approves the Facility Rental Fee Waiver Policy P-RECT-9, as per the attached document, effective June 12, 2023.
Councillor Twill, I wish to give some background.
With respect to the resolution for the new facility fee, rental fee waiver policy, the city recognizes the integral role that external user groups and individuals play in improving the quality of life for both residents and visitors into the city. The purpose of this policy is to ensure consistency, equity, transparency in addressing requests for reduction on waiving of all fees related to rental of municipal facilities, and to provide in-kind assistance to not-for-profit groups or individuals organizing charitable and fundraising events, requesting the use of the municipal facilities for a program, activity, or event as defined in this policy. We had a lot of good discussion at the committee level, and a result of that discussion, a lot of it was implemented in the, I would say, the emerged policy that was brought to, was brought to the committee. So, again, I'll do my best to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Questions called? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. CAO, is that another one? Got another one? Oh, planning. So councillor Twill, did you want to wrap up on the, okay, go ahead?
Just want to bring the council's attention, in case you haven't noticed, the floating dock is back in Victoria Park. I was by there today, by every day, and I can tell you that it's very, very popular. So a great feature, and certainly enjoyed by all demographics, young and old. It's a tremendous feature in our city, and people are really enjoying it. So if you get a chance, take your family down, take some pictures, history in the making.
Okay. Councillor Matar?
Actually, to the chair, is there any, any desire to have more floating docks down there?
What? Okay. No, turn on your, turn on your speaker there, your mic there.
That's an excellent question, councillor Matar. I know that sometimes the floating dock gets extremely crowded. I know that sometimes the floating dock gets extremely crowded because people are enjoying it, and they stay, you know, an extended period of time. That's something we can certainly discuss at our, at our next Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, but it is very, very popular. And who knows? I mean, there's other, there's other shorelines in the city, too, that maybe we could partner with some of our partners like CADC and whatnot, but the, this facility here is very well utilized. I, and I thank you for that question. Thank you.
Council Muttart, credit to Councilor Twill for pushing work back three or four years ago, and here we are with a fully installed dock with possible expansion. Okay. Planning? Deputy Mayor Yankoff. It's your floor.
Thank you, your worship. Just have to adjust my screen here. So the Planning and Heritage Committee did not meet in June, therefore there's no minutes in your package. The Planning Board met on June the 5th, so that you will see you have minutes and reports in your package. The Heritage Board met on May the 29th. Again, you will see minutes in your package. Design Review Board did not meet, and the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did not meet as well. This evening, for your consideration, we have six resolutions, one through Heritage Board and five through Planning Board, as well as two second readings. And just a quick update in terms of where we're at with our official plan. We have not, we've not progressed any further with that, and we, I anticipate we won't be probably going back out to the public until into the fall. We have some staffing shortages in the department, so we have to address those first. And so in the fall, we'll probably bring some more information back on the official plan and see where we are with that. And if anyone has any questions, I will do my best to answer. Thank you.
Council Twill.
Thank you for your report, and thank you for the timeline with respect to the official planning zoning and development bylaw, because there are residents asking questions, you know, as to where are we at, and when is the process going to continue, and when is it going to begin, and when is it going to conclude. The question I have this evening is, you know, our manager, Planning, retired, and I'm just wondering where we're at in the process in terms of, I guess now we're going to be not one manager, but two managers, and I'm wondering where we're at in the process with respect to filling those positions. They're very important positions, probably there's no position in City Hall that's more important than the planning, planning managers. People are looking for, you know, they're looking for some direction, some guidance.
Could I just interject for one minute? That will be coming up under the HR report? And, and she can answer, but the HR report will be discussed, and so there will be something from Finance also, Council McLeir, in terms of resolution? Yeah. Okay, go ahead there. Counsel, deputy?
Thank you, your worship, and I was going to say almost the exact same thing as you. If you hang, if you just hang tight, Council Twill, you'll get those answers, and I think it's probably premature for me to, to bring those up because it become, it'll be, it will be on the floor of council for council's decision to approve the recommendations from Finance and from HR on the direction in terms of our Planning and Heritage Department. So if you're good to wait just a few more committees, then you can, yep, have that opportunity then. Does that work for you? Great. Thank you.
CAO Eleanor, do you want to read off the, I think, the first Planning Board Resolution? Correct?
Thank you, your worship. This, this is actually Heritage Resolution Number One.
Thank you.
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend the approval for driveway access by moving the location from west, west to the east side of the property at 15 Richmond Street, PID 339721 be approved contingent on all other required approvals. And if there is a need to reduce the lot size of the heritage property at 15 Richmond Street to accommodate this driveway as presented, that council approve the request for subdivision in principle, subject to a final PIN survey plan and all other required approvals.
I believe, do you want to speak to it? I just want to have the chair to speak to it. Deputy Mary Yankoff?
Thank you, your worship. And folks, you probably would have noticed a similar resolution last month, and I just wanted to point out that this is a great example of developers and residents working together to find a, some common ground on, on the best way to proceed. So the driveway is being moved from the original approved resolution from one, from the opposite side, and I just wanted to point that out, that it's, it's nice to see developers and residents working together. Thank you.
Okay. Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. CAO, could you read the next one?
Thank you, your worship. Planning Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request for a temporary structure variance for an outdoor patio to occupy three required parking spaces at 131 Sydney Street, PID 339077, until the end of October 2023 be approved, subject to the applicant receiving an associated development permit from the Planning and Heritage Department, the Planning and Heritage Department receiving a letter of authorization from the property owner.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. Want to read the next one?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request for a temporary structure variance for an outdoor patio to occupy three required parking spaces at 330 University Avenue, PID 359687, until the end of October 2023 be approved, subject to the applicant receiving an associated development permit from the Planning and Heritage Department.
Okay. Council Twill?
Well, we're approving resolutions for patios, and I believe this is a private, a private property, and I know the business that's making the request. Can we not extend the, the resolution, you know, for, say, three to five years as opposed to continuously coming back year after year after year? I mean, I mean, from a predictable perspective, I know that they're going to be back again next year, and it seems like a moot point. Why don't we just approve it for, you know, say, three to five years, and so he can have that comfort zone and be able to do, maybe, maybe there's some other things he might want to do with respect to his patio. It gives him time to better plan and better, you know, look at the facility that he showcased to his customers, and it just gives him more lead time.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. And in terms of your question, these were temporary structures that we put into place during COVID-19, and so these are parking spots that are usually allocated, that they require to have for their businesses. So it's something that we can look at going forward, but this is still just an extension of the temporary COVID patios because there's no, there's no long-term bylaw yet created for the, to use your pat, your spaces for patios year after year. This was a brand-new thing for COVID. So I don't disagree that it should be something we do, but we can't do it until we have a bylaw created. So we'll, we can put that on the agenda for, to strive towards for next year. Okay?
Okay. Question? Question? Council Beck?
Yeah, I was just going to add that, that was discussed at our last meeting, and we did have that discussion, too, about that, Council Twill, and it is noted, and I think there was agreement that it's not a bad idea. So we did have that. But Deputy Mary Yankoff is correct, these are kind of separate patios dealing with the COVID part, and now we're trying to get all that aligned into one, one streamlined unit.
Thanks. Okay. Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, your worship. Planning Resolution Number Three, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request for a temporary structure variance for an outdoor patio to occupy one required parking space and one required loading space at 101 Longworth Avenue, PID 363671, until the end of October 2023 be approved, subject to the applicant receiving an associated development permit from the Planning and Heritage Department.
Okay. Council Twill?
So in terms of bylaw or not, not having bylaw requirements, the same logic would hold true here as well, right? Well, I certainly encourage you, Chair, Planning and Heritage, I know that this particular business, you know, they filled out their application a number of months ago, they're trying to plan, they're trying to get organized, and haven't received confirmation from the Planning Department. And to be honest with you, there's a little bit of frustration. They, they want to get organized, and they want to get their patio in place, and they want to have some consistency, and they want to have predictability, and it's, it's, it's very challenging. It's very challenging for some, for some of these businesses. These are small businesses, and, you know, there's, there's a fine line as to when it comes to margins of error, and they, they see this as a real attraction for their customers to, to bring people to their business. It's, it's a nice business that's there, it's kind of tucked in off, off the sidewalk, you know, a few hundred yards in, and, you know, I'd just like to try to give them, again, as much lead time as, as possible, and a comfort zone that, knowing that the City of Charlottetown is going to approve their, their application. So if we can somehow, I guess, through a bylaw, expedite the process, that would be advantageous for this business and other businesses that are facing the same challenges. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Yeah. Thank you, Council Twill, and just to reiterate from the previous resolution, that this has been discussed in length in the Planning, in Planning Board, and going forward, we will be developing a, a bylaw to expedite. And also, just to be mindful that, you know, the Planning Department right now is basically in triage mode as they weave their way through getting more staff. They're, they're, they're short by about five staff persons, so we certainly appreciate the residents and their patience on this and the business owners. So I think the, the scope of these conversations will look very different this time next year. Thank you.
Council Bernard? Thank you.
Thank you, yours. So with these, these conversations going on with the outdoor patios, I just wonder, is Public Works being involved in any of those conversations? Because I think, you know, a lot of these are going to be on public right-of-way, and Public Works has some plans to do construction, and we already given okay for a year or two. So I just wondered if they probably...
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, your worship. And so there's, there's two types of patios. There are the ones that are on the public right-of-way that fall under Protective Services and in conjunction with Public Works. And then there are the patios that are on private property that fall under Planning and Heritage. So there's three different departments basically getting to the same direction, and, you know, hopefully this time next year, we will not be in these silos so that it is all under one department. We just don't know yet what, where that is going to fit. So...
But the conversation is ongoing, so that's fine.
Yep. Ongoing. Yep.
Questions called? Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. Another one there. CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, worship. Planning Resolution Number Four, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the major variance request to increase the maximum height of a building in the R4A zone from 15, 15 meters to approximately 21.9 meters in order to construct a six-story, 91-unit mixed-use apartment building with an enclosed main-level parking and underground parking at 600 North River Road, PIDs 444678 and 600817 be approved, subject to a traffic impact study and any required traffic control upgrades to the satisfaction of the manager of Public Works, and the request to consolidate 600 North River Road, two parcels with PID 444678 and two parcels with PID 600817 be approved.
Questions called? All in favor, please raise your hand. Nine one, or nine zero. Got a hit on myself. CAO? Yep?
Thank you, worship. Planning Resolution Number Five, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix A Future Land Use Map of the City of Charlottetown Official Plan from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential, and amend Appendix G Zoning Map of the Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential, in order to construct, in addition to convert the existing two-unit semi-detached dwelling to a four-unit townhouse at 480482 Queen Street, PID 371203, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Questions called? All those in favor, just do it over public consultation? Nine zero. Okay. CAO, do you have a second reading, is it?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, worship. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PHZD2-068, as it pertains to water lots at the southerly terminus of Prince Street, PID 335430, at the southerly terminus of Great George Street, PID 335307, as attached, was read and approved a first time on May 8, 2023. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe?
Shall I carry? Okay.
Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe?
Shall I pass? Good. One second. A nine zero. Okay.
Thank you, worship. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PHZD2-609, as it pertains to 40 Riverside Drive, PID 839322, as attached, was read and approved the first time on May 8, 2023. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe?
Shall I carry?
Okay. Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe?
Shall I pass? Okay. Thank you, CAO. Council Strong. Okay. And that's it? Deputy? Thank you kindly. Okay. So we move on to, is it Environment? And it's, we got the manager here and the Council Bernard? Okay.
The Worship Environment Sustainability Committee met on May the 17th. As you can see, the minister in your package, I just have some highlights for your worship and council. Of course, one of them is, is the, the extra funds that we got from the provincial government from, from Minister Myers and Minister Deagle. April 1, we'll see a lot of those routes have started. So the addition of Route 23 is six days a week. It started April 1. The Eastern Primitive of Charlottetown connecting Sherwood and Hillsborough Park with the downtown. Saturday service for Route 23, an additional frequency on Route 1, an additional weekday frequency on Routes 1, 2, and 3. So that started April 1. On June the 1st, just last week, on demand evening services for Routes 2 and 3, five days a week, so 7:00 PM till 10:15 PM. That was requested a lot, so we got that, that evening shift on the go. The addition of Sleepy Hollow Road Loop, that's five days a week, Upton Road... Road Loop, that's five days a week, Upton Road and Royalty Road to Sleepy Hall Road to Lower Mallpack Road. So those are working now. They're on the move and they're working. So, your worship, the city released a report with the findings, the first phase of Charlottetown's first climate action plan. The report lays out the guiding principles, focus areas, and next steps, which will guide Phase 2 in developing a full climate action plan. And I think we're all looking forward to that, your worship. So the report can be found at charlottetownhall.ca/climaction for that first phase, if anybody wants to read up on it. The 2022 Environment Sustainability Annual Report is now available on the city's website. The report details progress made in 2022 towards the goals and actions of the city's Integrated Community Sustainability Plan and the Community Energy Plan. Highlights include the provision of nearly 3.5 million of 0% interest financing to homeowners, your worship, in 2022 to complete home energy upgrades, and the launch of the PEI Food Recovery Network, which, as we recall, rescued nearly 150,000 meals from going to waste. So a lot of good work there by staff. The worship, the city's annual Bike Week, now called Walk and Roll Week, to celebrate all forms of active transportation. Walk and Roll Week runs from June the 12th to the 18th. There is a full schedule of fun events across the city, including local active transportation-related arts, nature walks, a group mountain bike ride, e-bike test rides, and the mayor's bike ride around Victoria Park, and more. So the scheduled events and details can be found on our city's website. And your worship, we just wanted to give an update on the Fiona Restoration Program. Again, staff have been doing a ton of work on this, that we start to see the results. You've heard about the Operation Relief Program, which is the program that supplies one large, climate-resilient tree, is available to 95 private homeowners for a fee of $20. All 95 trees are now spoken for, but staff are creating a waitlist, as our committee will discuss possible options to reoffer this program again in the fall. So your worship, Environment Sustainability staff are working on planting 1,000 trees this year in our parks and natural areas, and are working together with the Public Works staff, planting another 150 large trees on the city right-of-ways. So the city's well on its way, your worship, planting 1,250 trees this year. So a lot of work from the staff, and want to say thank you, Jessica even pass that on to all the staff. It's a lot of good work. So, your worship, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions? Councillor Twill, and then Councillor Beck.
Thank you for your report. Just interested in the additional routes that you announced. And this began April 1? This began April 1, the additional routes? Okay. Okay. I'm interested in St. Peter's Road, for example. So I would take that route from connecting from Sherwood and Hillsborough Park to downtown, will be coming down St. Peter's Road, if I understand that correctly?
I'm not sure. I'll ask Jessica to answer that, unless there are roofs that come back downtown on. I thought it was, I didn't think it was St. Peter's Road, but I'll let Jessica answer that.
Could, Councillor Bernard, could we get a few questions? Can you just wrap some of the questions so she...
Well...
I just want to keep the flow going.
No, I want to keep going too, but I mean, this, answer this question is premised on my second question. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to get an understanding specifically, you know, where the routes are, whether it's St. Peter's Road, or Kensington Road, or Mount Edward Road, I'm not sure. But I know, you know, a lot of residents I've talked to, particularly in the neighborhoods that funnel into St. Peter's Road, have been making requests over the last couple of years, and I'm glad to see this here. I just want to try to understand as to whether it's St. Peter's Road, or Kensington Road, or Mount Edward Road.
Okay. Councillor Bernard, can Jessica answer that, please? Jessica, can you answer that, please?
Thank you, Councillor Bernard, through you, your worship. I can say that there are routes added along St. Peter's Road, but I can't say off the top of my head what the streets are specifically, so I'd have to get back to you on the exact routing.
Councillor Twill, turn on your mic.
And with that, as you know, I've been requested by residents regarding the shelters, and wondering, you know, the shelter is going to be lining up in these new routes. For example, I have a constituent that's physically challenged, living in the Garra Street area, that would like to have no access to a shelter in his community, so that he doesn't have to go, you know, half a mile down the street to get access to a shelter. So I'm just kind of looking for some context as to where the routes are and where you anticipate the new shelters.
Councillor Bernard, just one second.
Yeah, one thing I probably should have said is, you can go on the T3 website, and all the routes are there, outlined where they are. And like I said before, as far as the shelters, that would be something that we'll be leaning on T3 to give us some advice of where they should go, where the demand is for them.
Okay. Councillor Beck?
Yeah, just a quick question there. Thank you for your report, Councillor Bernard. Can you elaborate for me what on-demand service means for those routes? What it means exactly? Is it a booking system? Is it, how does that work? I'm just trying to understand that, if you could. Thanks.
Councillor Drong?
Yeah, my understanding is, and you're right, there is an app out there that you can book your seat, but I'm not sure Jessica's out on these particular routes. I know there's some that you can book it because there hasn't been enough room in the bus, so to speak. But I'm not sure if that's on these particular routes. I know it says on-demand for the June 1 for the evening one, and that's what I'm thinking, is that those evening ones, that's right, yes.
Do you want to, is it all right to go through Jessica?
I want to follow that for me.
Jessica?
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Bernard, and your worship. So the way the on-demand works is, there's kind of like a ring around the city where the buses go in either direction, and then there's the main spine down University Avenue. So the University Avenue one has more frequent service and later service, so the on-demand will basically move around the city in a circle. I think it might be, don't quote me on this, but it might be every hour, and it will take people to the main artery so that they can access the transit system better between the two routes.
Okay. Councillor McCabe?
And they probably, depending on the number, would use a smaller bus at that point to run that circle, right? And that's how they would work that?
Yes. Is that right, Jessica? Thank you. Thank you. Anyways, always good news about T3. We're glad, I'm very happy that we have a triple P provider for our transit because other municipalities don't have that luxury. So it's great to have the Casti Group with us. I just wanted to say for the mayor's ride, I'll be using my e-bike, so I can get up to 30 kilometers on that e-bike. And as for the 2 billion trees, I keep asking, Mr. Chair, about the 2 billion trees from the federal government, is that these 1,000 trees part of that 2 billion? Or, I'm just trying to find out. It was promised back in 2019 during the election campaign.
It's from Tree Canada. That's the same, just the same program.
Nope. Could I ask, is it all right to ask Jessica, can you just give us an update? Because I keep bringing it up.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Councillor Bernard, and your worship. The Tree Canada grant is separate from the 2 Billion Trees Program. So the federal government has appointed the provincial government of PEI to distribute the trees for the 2 Billion Tree Program. So staff are working closely with them on that, and they have told us that we will be getting tree stock and funding for that. We're just ironing out the specifics of what that looks like right now.
Good. No resolutions? Okay. Thank you, Councillor Bernard. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you very much. And we're moving on to strategic priorities, communications, and intergovernmental cooperation. Councillor, Norm Beck?
All right. Thank you for that, your worship. So, Priorities, Communications, and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on Tuesday, June 6, sorry, 2023, and the draft minutes are attached. Was a heavy content-laden material in the meeting, but we managed to get through it okay, thanks to the diligent efforts of our support staff and the attention to detail of the committee members. So thank you for that. It was a bit of a slugfest, but we got through it. And of course, I'm saying that in jest. Just a few things I do want to highlight from it. One is the community survey update, which is currently underway. The phone, we had, we're looking to get 500 respondents from the telephone survey, and that's a survey that we're using, a biennial survey that we're doing to help shape our decisions that we make with strategic plan and decisions that we make here at council. So we're really looking for the community to get involved. I'm pleased to say that so far, we have 175 of 500 who have responded by phone. It's a 15-minute interview. It's quite painless. So if you see Charlottetown survey come up, don't run and hide or click on it right away. Take the time. It's painless, but it's valuable information for us to have. And the online feature will be running until June 25. Actually, both will be running until June 25, so the phone calls will be going up until then. So please take the time with that. There were a couple of items that I do want to, I guess, I guess thank the freedom of information in the Ombudsmen's PEI for helping to provide some clarity of information for us. One was under the review of the STRs that took place back in 2019, and they did a very good job in terms of enlightening what the practices should be, and so we're thankful for that, for the work that they did. And the same for the Ombudsmen's PEI for their report with regards to a decision on the warming council, on the warming center as well, too. So some really good stuff came out of it, which is good to help us in terms of operating our functions on a daily basis. So it's great to have those kind of third parties involved, and they can give us, provide a different view or a different lens. So it's great to have that. The housing encampment, the meeting was held there recently, back in the first of May, and the information has been collated. Again, a copious amounts of information has been put there. It's all there for public viewing, if they want to see some of the items that were discussed as well, too. And those will be used. Three actionable items have come out of that, and one of them, which you'll see here in the resolutions tonight as well, too. So all kinds of good stuff going on, and I do want to re, just going back to the FOIP piece. We have a couple of staff members, Chantel and Matheson and Cindy McMillan, who have done a huge body of work. Imagine wading your way through FOIP is not an easy task, and they've been really diligent in terms of their work with that and getting, keeping up to date. When we were up for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Meeting, they were also up there for some training as well, too. So it's great to have that support in behind us and moving forward as well. So good stuff happening, and we had a great meeting, and looking forward to another one coming up at the end of this month. Any questions about anything, feel free to ask.
Councillor Twill?
Thank you for your report, Councillor Beck. Just on the Ombudsmen's, you know, contacting the city and giving information as required to the two items that you mentioned, you know, holding closed-door meetings versus hosting these meetings in a public forum. The concern I have is, as the Ombudsmen's office taken the place of municipal affairs, in that I would think that our senior staff would be in constant contact with municipal affairs, and that exchange of information would be ongoing to make sure that, you know, we are following the government municipal, the MGA, the Municipal Government Act. And I'm hoping that, from a proactive perspective, that that sharing of information is done consistently and continually during that 365-day period, as opposed to us reacting to what the Ombudsmen has, you know, brought forward. So just as a suggestion, maybe you and your senior manager could even meet with, you know, Municipal Affairs to, again, from a proactive perspective, to get that information so that we are following the proper procedures and following process, as opposed to hearing from the Ombudsmen who is reacting because someone has filed a Freedom of Information. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm finding that the whole, you know, this seems to be a different, a different dynamic at play, as opposed to, you know, what we're, what we're previously used to in terms of our open lines of communication with municipal affairs. Thank you.
Councillor Beck?
Thank you for that, Councillor Twill. I think now that we have our new CAO in place, I think those lines of communication are where we've been, have, we've had quite a few conversations, actually. And I think those will continue. And now that, you know, some of us are, some of us are new to this ourselves, and we're trying to figure our way out a bit, too. But I couldn't agree with you more in terms of understanding the importance of that open communication and kind of being on top of things, as, you know, as you say, proactive as opposed to reactive. But sometimes it is important that if things don't go the way they should be going, that someone else kind of is there to say, you know what, it should be done differently. And that's a good part about it, too. So there will always be that element of it. But I think the, I think we're pretty comfortable, and I know CAO Eleanor has a lot of provincial government experience in terms of navigating her way around that. And I think those lines of communication are emerging, and they're, I think there's a receptivity to engaging in conversations. I think the doors will be open here and go forward against us. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, resolutions? You want to read the first one there? CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, your worship. Strategic Priorities, Communications, and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Councillor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff. Be it resolved that council improve the City of Charlottetown's application of Section 119 of the Municipal Government Act by having the mayor, committee chairpersons, and chief administrative officers strenuously test whether a topic meets the provisions set out in Section 119 of the Municipal Government Act before adding it as a closed-session agenda item. B, using plain language in council and committee meeting agendas to describe topics that will be addressed in a closed session. C, having the mayor or chairperson rise and report in council or committee meetings after the motion is made to come out of closed session. And D, adopting a continuous improvement culture as it relates to good governance and application of legislation.
Okay. Councillor Beck, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you for that, your worship. And I think that was one of the things that I was referring to in terms of being able to come out of this meeting with some greater clarity in terms of how we should be doing things. Because I think one of the clear revelations from that request was that there was a lot of confusion about that night, in terms of what was going on, and closed, not closed, that sort of thing. So I really like what this does in terms of reiterating the importance of following protocols, following procedures. And so I think this is a good measure to work towards a good reminder. And I like the last part about the continuous improvement as well, too, that we constantly look at those things and figure out what is the best way to advance forward. So certainly supportive of the motion.
Councillor Beck, Ombudsmen's PEI, did they have a request to investigate, or did they investigate on their own? Was it, was it an investigation that was motivated by Ombudsmen's PEI? I don't think we refer to it Ombudsman anymore. It's Ombudsmen's PEI. Do you have something there? Do you want to go through the CAO?
I'll defer to CAO Eleanor on that.
CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, your worship. This was Ombudsmen's PEI's own initiative assessment, which means they opened it themselves. And to be clear, in order to bring resolution... And to be clear, in order to bring resolution to this assessment, it was important that this report and the contents and what happened at that meeting be available publicly and read publicly, and that's the purpose of this report that's been included today. And also, to be very clear, that the resolution that's been read today and the recommendations that were included in the report were not made by Ombudspie. That is coming as a recommendation from this municipality and this municipality's commitment to good governance moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, Counselor Bernard?
Yeah.
Just want to rise in?
I thought I read it in the package, your worship. I can't find it right now, but I thought I also was part of this. One thing we've been asking for, for a while is, a lot of the closed sessions, when it's in our binder, we don't know what was talked about. I thought I read it, I thought it was going to be part of this resolution, but when you come out of a closed meeting, it was going to discuss.
What was discussed?
Topic was. Not necessarily everything to talk about, but whether it was a human resource issue or whether it was a legal issue, because right now, some of these reports, they go into a closed session, it doesn't say.
Yeah.
Is that still part of this? Well, it was, I don't know better than that.
Yeah. So, Counselor Beck, could the CAO respond to that, or do you want to?
Either one. Go ahead, you go ahead, Eleanor.
CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, your worship. So, there's, there's two parts of the recommendation. One is using plain language in our council agendas. So, often our agendas will refer to Section 119 and then a letter, and it says in legal language what it's referring to. So, we would still do that as part of our agenda, but then under that, we would put in plain language, if, for instance, you were negotiating a contract for land, you might just say negotiating land contract. You wouldn't say where it is or any detail, but you would describe what's going on. So, that's one piece. And then the other piece is a rise and report. So, that means that anytime the mayor comes out of a closed session or a committee chair comes out of the closed session, you would say, I'll use, I use myself in the example, I'll use it here as I'm talking about it, too. So, say in, at a committee, you were negotiating the CAO's contract. So, if, when you come out of that enclosed-session discussion, if the negotiations are still going of the CAO's contract, you would come out and you would rise and report, and you would say, the closed session was about negotiation of the CAO's contract, those negotiations are ongoing. That would be that. But say you came to the end of your negotiation, so we're in a council meeting now, you would come out of there and you would have a resolution to the CAO's contract or whatever topic that you were discussing. So, that's what that rise and report is.
Okay. No. Perfect, Counselor Beck. That's what we were looking for, so that just gives an idea of what's being discussed. So, thank you.
Counsel Twill?
With regards to the process of, you know, coming out of a closed-door meeting with a resolution, I have, in previous years, just based on, you know, some of the case law that's taking place in provinces like Ontario, I've, I've often raised the, the issue that you can't have the majority of your discussions behind closed door and then just open the doors and have a resolution, because population should be aware of what the discussions that are taking place. It's not enough just to say, okay, now we're going to be open and transparent, open the doors and pass a resolution. Doesn't work that way. Way it works is, if you're going to pass a resolution, a public forum, and it doesn't fall under some of the things that Counsel Bernard brought up about whether it be legal or purchasing land or whatever, lots of times, we're having discussions, and those discussions need to take place, I believe, need to take place in a public forum. So, I, I think you've got to be careful there, just to say, okay, we're going, we're going to have discussions or we're going to go behind closed door and then, behind closed doors, and then open the doors and, and maybe a couple of words are said, and, and, and the community's left out of, you know, what the debates and what discussions have actually taken place. So, I think we've got to be careful in, in that regard.
Okay.
Because, you know, judges in, in places like Ontario have warned municipalities, your deliberations and discussions, as long as you don't fall under one of those particular headings, need to take place in a public forum.
Counselor Beck, could I just ask Counselor Beck, because it's, and, and Counselor Beck, again, Section 119, subsection 1, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, commercial information, information received in confidence, I think we're following some of that, and when we do question, we do bring in our legal counsel. Counselor Beck?
Yeah, and I, I think that's part of the, there are some things that do have to go into closed meetings, and that's part of the A part with strenuously testing whether it, it falls under those criteria, which are under the MGA for a closed, a closed-door meeting. To Counsel Bernard's point, the other part of that would be in terms of providing a general and kind of what CAO Eleanor, we will have that part there on a go-forward basis, that say, this is a general topic, but we won't get into any sort of specifics due to the, the, the closed nature requirements of the meeting. So, that's the, that's the other part that I do like about this, is that we're going to really think about whether it fits or whether it does not fit, because I would agree with you that we want to conduct as much business as we can in open sessions and have that information there, and where required, by law, again, to go in and to move into a closed session. And those closed sessions are closed sessions for a reason, and that could be a wide variety of reasons. But we'll try and give as much information as we can to give a little bit of an idea, but we have to be guarded in terms of what we reveal and what we do in open and what we do in closed sessions. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Bernard, and then Councilor, Deputy Mary Ankauf.
I was just going to say, using when we go into closed sessions, because it's a legal legality, it's, it's, we get lawyers' advice before we go into a closed session, because we put the city in a lot of situations.
Well, I, I remember, I remember being in this chamber back in 2000, 2006, we'd be here till nine o'clock in a closed session, and then we wanted to pass something, and the mayor would say, open the doors, we'll have an opening. Rules are all changed. We're doing a much, much better job. Deputy Mary Ankauf? Sorry?
Thank you, your worship. And I would just point out, too, that if we are in a closed session and business has concluded, and we are coming out of a closed session with a resolution, any resolution that comes to council has a report with it, so the public would be very aware of what we discussed, because we can't pass a resolution without a staff report. Just making that point.
Good point. Okay. Question? Questions called. All those in favor? Okay. Deputy, I was going to say Deputy Mayor, CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, your worship. Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number Two. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Ankauf. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown supports the creation of an inter-jurisdictional city-led response team to address unhoused encampments within the city's legislated mandates, with the terms of reference to be developed by the response team and its members.
Okay. Counselor Beck, did you want to give, just leave it as is? Okay. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine zero.
Thank you, your worship. Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number Three. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Ankauf. Whereas, be it resolved, whereas the growing social crisis and impacts of poverty have downstream effects on our municipality, putting unsustainable pressure on our limited resources to deliver necessary public services and social, social supports as we struggle to keep up with downloaded responsibilities. Whereas, basic income addresses key social determinants of health, such as income and housing. It can alleviate pressures on municipalities to address poverty and fill gaps in social supports, such as shelter, housing, food security, and mental health. Whereas, the provision of guaranteed livable basic income would benefit individuals, families, and communities, and protect the most vulnerable in society, and evidence shows that a federally-funded basic income that improves people's financial stability is possible, as successful income transfer programs already exist in Canada for seniors, old-age security and guaranteed income supplement, and for parents, child, Canada Child Benefits, CCB. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the City of Charlottetown direct the office of the mayor to write a letter to the Prime Minister, the PII members of Parliament, and the Premier of Prince Edward Island, calling on these orders of government to engage in discussions that focus on developing a guaranteed livable basic income.
Counselor Beck, and then Counselor Twill?
Thank you for that, your worship. So, just by the way, brief history, this was last, or the meeting on April 30th?
May 30th.
May 30th, sorry. We had a presentation from Wayne Easter and Marie Burge on the basic income guarantee. And of course, we are fully cognizant that this is a provincial, federal responsibility with implications at the municipal level, but still, it was good to have the presentation from Marie and Wayne and to hear their, what they had to say about a basic income guarantee. There was a little bit, and this is kind of going back to following our, our procedures and their protocols, there was a little bit of, we had a resolution come forth that was un, we were kind of.
Caught off guard.
Caught off guard, okay. Thank you, your worship. Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, our CAO managed to stable the waters and said that this really has to go back to a committee to follow proper procedure, and it did. So, it came back at, at our last Strategic Priorities meeting. And so, the idea was to try and draft a resolution that reflected what was asked of us that night and what the council was kind of feeling on that night, and to try and come up with a, a report, so again, that we can track where we are and what we're doing, and also to give us background information with the recommendation. So, as we discussed at the committee level, we, we looked at it and we tried to, I guess, meld what was being presented in, and asked of us on that evening into a resolution, and this is what we have before you here today, so feel free to offer any comments on that.
Counsel, Counselor Twill?
The night of the presentation, I asked Wayne Easter, who was there with Marie Burge, representing the Cooper Institute, I'm paraphrasing, what model are you looking at in terms of basic income? Because there's, there's a variation, there's different versions of the basic income that, that are, they're being discussed here at, here in Prince Edward Island with, with some of these NGOs and, and other, other groups. For example, I know that the Federation of Labor has made a, a number of presentations to Ottawa and the appropriate ministers that are involved with this, with this initiative. And the concern I have is passing, with passing this resolution is, you know, I certainly don't want to send the message to the Federation of Labor that we're usurping all the good work that they've done, and maybe, don't know, maybe it's a different model, a different version of what we're passing here today. You know, Federation of Labor has done tremendous amount of work, and it's been ahead of the curve for a number of years. So, I'm just very concerned about what model we're supporting versus to the model that Federation of Labor has already presented to Ottawa. So, I, I, I think it's important that we keep that in mind when we're embarking upon passing resolutions of, of this nature, because a, a lot of good work has already been done. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of effort, a lot of flights to Ottawa, a lot of meetings, follow-up meetings. I, I just think we've got to be careful. I appreciate the, the, you know, the, the motivation behind the resolution, I really do, but I do have concerns about what version we're supporting versus the version that's already on, 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 on the tables in, in Ottawa. So, I, I just wanted to bring that forward.
Can I just clarify to Counsel Twill? You're referring to Carl Percy from the Federation of Labor?
Pardon me?
Carl Percy? Is that who you're referring to?
That's exactly who I'm referring to.
And you know that Carl Percy is also working on the one EI zone? That's a prominent issue for him. Counselor Beck?
Well, just like Counselor Materico first, if he.
Did you want to respond to?
Yeah, maybe I could, yeah.
That's what I want. Sure. Counselor Materico?
I think what was important, I think that was kind of the concern that we had at the last meeting, was that we didn't know what we were endorsing. And I think that was part of the resolution, which is kind of why we chose to phrase the resolution in the manner that was done, because you are right, Counselor Twill, that there are various iterations of, of basic income guarantee, and there's some that are being called basic income guarantee, which really aren't what Wayne and Marie were describing to us that night. So, there are various forms that this could take, and I think that's why we were, that's why the, this motion calls for them to engage in the discussions about a basic income guarantee. So, you guys get together, figure it out, tell us what it's going to look like, and then we can move forward and figure out whether, I mean, it's really, again, it's not our jurisdiction, it's a provincial, federal matter, and if it's going to be done, it has to be done at those levels. I think what Wayne and Marie were looking for us to do was to say, get together and talk about it and figure it out. And, you know, Wayne talked about pilots not being done since 1970, there was a pilot done in Ontario in 2016, which was stopped after, I think, 18 months, and that's come with its own complications as well, too. And so, we are not really, this motion is not really endorsing anything. It's, it's endorsing a discussion, it's endorsing them to get together, to, to have the, have their own debates and figure out what that potentially could look like. And I think we are, I think that was one of the concerns when we were talking about this at the April 30th, or May 30th meeting, was that we didn't really know fully, I mean, Wayne and Marie are very convincing, they're very passionate people, but there's a whole host of other things to consider as well, too. So, I think, I think we are, I think this resolution says get together, it doesn't really say we are endorsing one particular format of basic income guarantee or anything of that nature.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Counselor Materico?
Thank you, Counselor Beck. You know, I know that on the night of the presentation, I had asked some questions myself and a bit confused as to what we were actually being asked to endorse, and I felt at that time, we were being asked to support an initiative, and I didn't feel comfortable based on not having enough information around that and what I was committing myself to or committing council to. So, I'm glad to see that there has been a change in that, because I think, and I just want for clarity purposes, and I know you, you probably just touched on it here a minute ago, it does say that we're really engaging, we're endorsing more now in engagement and in discussion, as opposed to, I believe, the last time.
Implement.
On the resolution, it showed they wanted our commitment, but the conversation was kind of going a little bit everywhere, and at the end, I think we were all confused about it. So, for clarity purposes, I think this is something that I can now stand behind. It's a discussion with the municipal level, with the provincial and the federal level going forward. So, I appreciate you taking that back to the committee and working through kind of the logistics of that and understanding of that, so we can get some clarity, and I have the clarity that I need. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Materico. Counsel Twill?
Just for, just as a suggestion, Counselor Beck, I mentioned the Federation of Labor. Maybe in future, maybe your committee could set up a meeting with Mr., Mr. Percy to learn about all of the good work that he's done over, you know, I mean, there's a real commitment there, and that commitment's been years in the, years in the making, and I, I just think, you know, once again, it'd be advantageous that if, you know, we're, we're looking for government to, to encourage government to have these, have these discussions and deliberations, I think it only, you know, from a, from a respectful point of view, I think it'd be essential and imperative that we also engage with the Federation of Labor. Again, I can't emphasize enough, I know firsthand all the good work that they're doing, and there's a big commitment there, and there's a lot of dedication, a lot of meetings in Ottawa, and I think we should be aware of what they're presenting on behalf of Prince Edward Island.
Okay. You'll take that into consideration, and I know the deputy mayor wants to get back to that one zone for EI, so we'll be reaching back to Carl Percy. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. Is that it, CAO? Thank you, Counselor Beck. Thank you, CAO. Next report is, oh, Finance. Thank you, Carly. Thank you, Janice. Okay. Counselor McLeir?
Thank you, your worship. The Finance Committee met June 7th, 2023. Those. Those minutes and material circulated in your binders or your digital copies. Just, just a couple of highlights that are in that information. We had, we had two staff people in from the Charlottetown Civic Center, as you can see, that talked about their budget and their needs. It was good to have them in, and as you know, which was dealt with in Parks and Recreation, we had a large tender to deal with that also come through Finance, Parks and Recreation, on the Simmons Tender for, for over, you know, $12,500,000 approximately. So, anyway, it was good to see that that got passed here at the Parks, the Parks part. Also, we're going to have a second reading of our Grants Bylaw, and one of the things that's also in your, in your material is, I think there's going to be, there's another tool that's going to be of great help, I believe, as it relates to scoring grants and how we, you know, for staff, there's a grant application scoring template. I'll be interested to see if, you know, what council feels of that, if they feel that can be a useful tool. And also, Betty, Betty, our manager and her staff have prepared, we've got year-end financials from April 30th to March 31st, 2023, and, you know, in your binders, great information, and also an up-to-date April 30th, '23 financial statement for the end of April. Also, there's four resolutions for your consideration and possible debate, and look forward to putting those on the floor, and hopefully, hopefully they're passed. Thank you, Your Worship.
Do you want to deal with the resolutions first? Okay. Counselor McLeer, she's going to read the one, first one, CAO Eleanor? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Finance Audit Tendering Administration Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor McLeer, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown award the server backups and disaster recovery request for proposal to the highest bid. Storage Pipe Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $34,284 per year, for three years, for a total of $102,852 plus applicable taxes, as outlined in the attached report to Finance IT-01-2023, and the mayor and the CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. CAO, yeah?
Thank you, Your Worship. Finance Audit Tendering Administration Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor McLeer, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown renew the ESRI Small Enterprise Agreement for three years in the amount of $48,910 in Year One, $50,380 in Year Two, $51,890 in Year Three, plus applicable taxes, as outlined in the attached report to Finance IT-02-2023, and the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
You have a question in the resolution? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. Okay. Yes, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. Finance Audit Tendering Administration Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor McLeer, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown approve the following new management structure and planning in the Planning and Heritage Department, as outlined in the attached report to Finance HR-0606-2023. Number one, that the Manager of Building Codes be funded as part of the 2024-2025 budget. Number two, that the Manager of Policy and Heritage Manager position be created and funded by eliminating the Assistant Planning Manager position, with the difference to be funded by the Department of Planning and Heritage Salaries and Benefits budget from 2023-2024 onwards. Number three, that a Planner III Principal Planner Development and a Planner III Principal Planner Policy be immediately funded in the amount of $152,184.60 from the Department of the Planning and Heritage Salaries and Benefits budget from 2023-2024 onward, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor Beck? Deputy Mayor Yankov? Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, in reading that report, there was a lot of positions that I was trying to get my head around, and it was kind of dizzying by times. So under the second one there, the manager, and that the Manager of Policy and Heritage Manager position be created and funded by eliminating the Assistant Planning Manager position, with the difference to be funded by the Department of Planning and Heritage Salaries and Benefits budget. So, we're taking money from one pot to pay one salary and putting it into another pot to pay another salary? Is that how I'm reading that correctly? Or, like I, and I'll say all this, I'm 100% behind beefing up our planning department, so I want to move this forward. I just want to understand a little bit in terms of where we're paying for this, or how we're moving money around, or what are the positions being moved? Because there was, seemed to be, seemed to me, a lot of moving parts in this whole, in this whole piece, in the additional reported behind, too, so. Just a little clarification.
Counsel, Counsel McLeer? I just, I have to shut someone off there, guys. Okay, Counsel McLeer, can you try? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Counsel McLeer. Okay, just one second.
Thank you, Counselor Beck, for your question, and I certainly get, certainly get your concern, perhaps, I didn't say confusion, but there's some, there's some moving parts to it, and I'll defer to the CAO Eleanor to maybe give some clarity around that. Thank you.
CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counselor Beck. So the funding for these positions for this year is coming out of salaries and benefits for existing planning and heritage department. We have so many vacancies that we have space, we have budget space in there, so that's what's being proposed, and then it would be funded ongoing, next year's budget forward for these positions. Thank you.
Deputy Mary Yankov?
Thank you, Your Worship. And if anyone was wondering, this has, this has nothing to do with the already committed new bylaw officer that will be helping assisting all of the various bylaws in the Planning and Heritage Department. So I just wanted to clarify that, that is still a priority and moving forward as well. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard, and then Counsel Matarco?
Actually, Counselor Beck asked the question, Eleanor answered it. That's the second question I had, was I just wanted to see, it looked like it was money within the, within the department, and anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, yes, you asked that question, so, thank you. I will say while I'm up, though, that it's good to see, because we all know planning has been a hurting unit for the last number of years, and they've needed staff big time, so, yeah, no, it looks good, if that money's in the budget, great. Thank you.
Yeah, just at the Atlantic Mayor's Congress, a lot of municipalities are looking for planners, so. Counsel Matarco?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think just from, from an HR perspective, and I'll speak to that, because this is, crosses both in planning and both in finance, you know, I think it's important to recognize that, I believe, that one of the positions was held by our former manager, and Alex Forbes, who, my understanding, wore many hats and did many things. This will allow for the ability to be more efficient, streamline the area of planning and heritage, but also, and as a result of that, that's going to have a direct benefit to the public, because it allows us to move forward. So, I think, you know, in looking at this from an HR perspective, we need to be doing succession planning, but also, you know, focused on recruitment and retention as we move forward, to get the best quality resources available to the city, and they're in high demand, as you said, in the conversation you had there, and so I think that that's a real benefit, and we'll see that in the long, like, in, maybe not right up front here, but in the long term, we should see that. So just from an HR perspective, I wanted to add the full support to this resolution.
Okay. Question called?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. Do we have another one there?
Thank you, Your Worship. Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee Resolution Number Four, moved by Counselor McLeer, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown approve the attached grant application scoring template to be used for evaluating grant applications.
Counselor Beck?
Yeah, thank you for that, Your Worship, and I'm, I know this came up at a previous meeting about looking for a kind of a rubric, a template, whatever it is, that we want to use, and I think, thanks for the initiative. I'm kind of looking at it, but I'm, and I'm kind of wondering, and I don't know, I find it hard to understand really how you come up with, like, there's two parts to it. There's the, there's the scoring, which has a score of 31 to 35, 90 to 100% of the request, grant requested, and then down below, it has kind of the various criteria, and there's a one to five. So, I'm not really sure how the scoring grid and the rank are connected with the criteria. I'm kind of having a hard time understanding in terms of, if I were sitting there and I was assessing an application, what am I looking at, or how am I going to arrive at a number? Again, when we do our RFPs, there's criteria that are set out, and you score all the different criteria, and you come up with a number at the end. I'm just having, I'm kind of having a little bit of struggle as to how we come up with a number that would allow us to determine who are the most worthy recipients of the grants that we're going to be giving out. So, I appreciate the, I appreciate the effort of the template, I just have a hard time kind of understanding how, how it would be used, or how it would be implemented. If it could enlighten something, then maybe I'm missing something here.
Counsel McLeer?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Beck, and I, I'll just give you my, my little bit on it, and maybe defer to either Sue or CAO Eleanor. This is, this is put out as, you know, as a start, you know, as a discussion, and the grid that's in the upper right-hand corner is something that may or may not be necessarily something that we follow, but it's just, it's, I guess it's a first pass, and looking for ways to, you know, improve it. Again, I don't think it's, you know, even with improvements, there's always probably going to, at the end of the day, when, when these things come out and grants are allocated, at the end of the day, there's probably always going to be some fault found, you know? But I do think it is a tool that, that can help staff and ultimately offset the committee and council level in improving, you know, grant requests. So I'll pass that, CAO Eleanor, or Sue, I'm not sure which.
Okay. Well, let's take it on the CAO or the Director of Corporate Services.
Betty French?
Okay. Oh, good. Oh, we'll put the manager on the, on the firing line.
Sure.
Manager Betty French.
Try to provide some clarity here.
Thank you.
So the intention is there that we have, well, you can't see it, sorry, it's in your package. The, there's seven different criteria listed, and then there is a ranking of one to five for each of the particular criteria, so that's how we come up with a maximum of 35. There you go. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Tracy. So, for instance, for the first one, just demonstrating financial need, and just to clarify, too, the intention is that this is a template that would be completed by staff, and then the staff would come up with a recommendation, and that would then be forwarded to the Finance Committee for their review. So if we were to look at demonstrating financial need, they would look at, from one to five, what is a determination of their financial need, and then we would go through each of the seven criteria and add up the total there, the maximum being 35. And if they scored 35, for instance, it would then be, 90 to 100% would be the recommended grant requested would be awarded, or that would be the recommendation. I know when I was first looking at it, another consideration was, what if somebody had a particularly large grant request? So that might be something that we would look at, that would kind of be tied into the overall budget and the number of grants requested and that sort of thing. So, this is a starting point and a way to document how we came to our decision. So even if somebody came up to 35, and we thought, well, they've asked for $200,000, that seems like a lot compared to the other grant requests and maybe the amount of their overall budget, but we would then document that all here and come up with an overall recommendation that would come forward to council.
So if they get 35, they get the money? No, just a joke. Okay. Counsel Yankov? No, sorry, Deputy Mayor Yankov?
Mercy, thank you, Your Worship, and I just wanted to clarify that the grant application and the scoring template would be shared with council as well as the public, I would assume, so that folks could understand how we got to, how we're giving out taxpayers' money, is that correct? I guess I'll ask the chair.
Counsel McLeer? Turn your mic on there.
Thank you, Counselor...
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Yankov. Again, that would be, I think that would be still discussion at the committee level to determine if that would make, you know, be part of the public thing, but I would think in, in the vein of transparency, it probably should be, so.
Hey, Counselor Beck, and Counsel McCabe? I had you there? Oh, Counsel Matarco, sorry, sir, go right ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, to the chair. You know, I believe I was one of the ones who requested that we have some type of matrix like this to, to help us get through that process, and I, you know, if I recall, I think we had a $500,000 budget, and we were trying to allocate where it went and how it made sense. So it's great to see that this is, that was, is a start. To the manager, you, I had a question, you somewhat answered it, I, my first reaction when I saw, if you score between 31 and 35, it's talking about at least a 90 to 100% grant requested, and we've had some pretty serious requests made for the tune of a million dollars, so I think that we need, permit, yeah. So I think we need to have some other criteria around that, that it's, you know, because we will have some large initiatives that will come in, that will certainly be over our threshold. Again, complicating it even a little bit further, but adding another layer of, yes, you scored in that 31 to 35 range, but we can't fully allocate a million dollars to you, or even 500,000, because then our, our pot per se is gone. So I think that we had a little bit more to do on that, and I think once we get that, we'll kind of be able to balance it, what that criteria means, so, but it is a great start, and thank you very much for putting that together.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Norman Beck?
Yeah, thanks for that. I feel much more enlightened than I was back a few minutes ago, so, thank you for that.
Part of the process.
And I would have to concur with Counsel Matarco, too, in terms of, you know, I think it's a great tool now that I understand it a little bit better, and I think there will be some fine tuning that would be going, this is a great starting point, and I think it satisfies the request to have a tool, and I think it's a pretty good tool to start off with, so, thank you for that.
Counsel Julie McCabe?
Thank you, Your Worship. So perhaps what I'm hearing, just as part of the Finance Committee, with the resolution on the floor that we're going to adopt and accept this, is that we maybe defer this for a little bit longer, to bring it back to committee, just to look at fine tuning some of those points, which were really good, to make sure that we're, before we adopt something, that we're all happy with what we're adopting.
Well, we have time, so you're moving to deferred? Do you want to second that, Counsel McLeer? Okay, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Questions called? All in favor of the deferral? Okay, nine zero. Do you have another, okay, go ahead. CAO?
Thank you, Your Worship. City of Charlottetown Grants Bylaw 2023-GB-01, to repeal the City of Charlottetown Grants Bylaw 2018-17, initially approved and adopted December 4th, 2018, and replaced with the attached Grants Bylaw 2023-GB-01, which applies to council. City of Charlottetown staff and any person... City of Charlottetown staff and any person, group, or body for which the municipal grants may be established, application may be made, reviewed, and awarded. Be it resolved that the bylaw was read the first time at a previous public meeting of council. Therefore, further be resolved that the City of Charlottetown Grants Bylaw 2023-GB-01 be read a second time, and that said bylaw now be approved and adopted. Moved by Counselor McLeer, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
So CAO Eleanor, does this have any connection in relation to the resolution that we just discussed? I'm just wondering if it does.
This is the main bylaw for it. But.
Yeah, but does that affect?
Thank you, your worship. So this is the base bylaw for it, and the template is a tool of implementation.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Shala Carey. Okay, that's it, great. And Counselor, Counselor McLeer, that's it? That's your report? Thank you. And next one is Human Resources. Counselor Matart, thank you, Rory, and thank you, Betty. Okay, Counselor Matart, I'll put you on there. You're live.
Thank you, your worship. The Human Resource Committee met on June 7, 2023, and it had a special committee meeting on June 9. The minutes of the meeting are included in your package, and there is one resolution for your consideration this evening. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to address them. If not, I'll send it over to our manager, Emily.
Okay, Counselor Twill.
Thank you for your report, Counselor Matart. As you can recall, last, last month, I brought up the position of the Community Engagement Officer. I see it here. Just wondering where we're at in terms of filling the position? If you could give me a timeline and timeframe? This position was well utilized when we, when we headed here, City Hall. It assisted counselors in terms of engaging with their residents, which I think is very important. And from my own perspective, I would like to see that move forward, so that gives us that freedom and that flexibility. And the purpose of the Community Engagement Officer truly works with elected officials. Thank you.
Counselor Matart.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. Yes, I do recall you bringing that up at the last meeting, so I did bring that back to our committee, and we did have some great discussion on that position. I will say that the, the position itself does still exist within the HR structure. However, funding for that position was reallocated to other areas. Now, we do have two positions within the Mayor of Office and Council with, with Jackie and Sheri. You know, in looking at, we spoke about, you know, did we want to revisit this position? And what value and benefit did it, did it have for council and mayor? We're not debating that it doesn't or that it does. We just want to look to see if that's something that we may revisit. And then if so, we would certainly then have to look to find the funding, or either take back and move around. So I think at the time, the, the funding of that was used, utilized in other areas where needed. So that's all I have to report on that. Is there any further questions you have on that? And if so, maybe the CAO or Emily can help address them as well.
Twill, go ahead.
So, so that's still be, if I understand it, or maybe I didn't understand it, but, so we're still looking at the position for the Community Engagement Officer. I wasn't aware that the funding for that position was reallocated. I was not aware of that. Secondly, I, I appreciate you bringing it back to the committee and having those discussions. I can't emphasize enough just how important that position is. I mean, that, that's truly, that position was truly there for, for counselors, to help us reach out to our communities and to work with our communities. And that, that's something that was, to my mind, was indispensable to helping us assist, is doing our, assist us in doing our jobs. So I, I really hope that comes to fruition. And the other question I have is, since we were discussing planning here earlier, I'm given to understand, I don't know, was this new term of council or the previous term, but there was an internal report done on the Planning Department. I'm not sure if it was done for this term or the previous term, but if that's the case, I would certainly like to have a copy of that report so I can read it. Thank you.
Counselor Matart, do you want to take a question from the deputy, or do we want to answer it away? That's up to you. Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Close to, thank you, Counselor Twill. Again, we're not in an active state of looking at that position right now. It's not to say we won't, it's just, it's not. I believed during, and again, before my time, but the discussions we had at the committee meeting was that some of the community engagement that you're talking about will be done through communications and some of our channels that we have, but also through the Office of Mayor and the resources that we have here as well to assist us in things. And again, maybe we need to define in a little bit more as to the things that you're talking about and expect from that particular type of position, and to see if there, are there other ways or means for that? Or is there a dedicated position? I think you're referring to that position existed in the past, and if so, is that something we want to revisit here into the future?
Yeah.
I think we'll take that back to committee again, and if that's, we want to continue. But as of right now, the position, there is not an active position. We're not pursuing that position as an active. And to answer a question that Counsel Bernard had the same evening, was, the question was, was that position in the governance report? And the answer to that question is no, that was not identified as a, as a potential position through the governance report. So I wanted to report back to you on that one as well. And to your second point, I think it was about a planning.
Internal review.
Internal review. I don't think I'm in a position to speak to that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what you're referring to, so I'll either defer to the CAO or to the manager, Emily, or we can come back at a later date with some information on that.
Well, the, the current, the current acting manager is the CAO, but I don't know if she's in a position to answer it, because I think that was the previous.
I don't want to put anybody on the spot, I just don't know if, that that.
You want to defer to her?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
CAO.
Thank you, your worship. Two-parter. The Community Engagement Assistant Position, if there's interest in, the, the position exists, it's not funded. So if you'd like that position to come back into play again, I would recommend that it come back at budget time and request that it be funded as part of budget, budget time. From what I can tell, the, the position was reorganized before my arrival, and some of that position went to the creation of the Cultural and Economic Coordinator position. So those funds had been reallocated. The second part, in terms of a study that was done, a report that was done in the Planning and Heritage Department, that report and the level of detail in there is operational. It's not a policy or program or council-level report. Yes, it's not a structural report. It's about improvements to things like communication that can go on within departments, so it's very operational. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just, can I just get Counselor, Deputy Mayor Yankoff? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. I think that CAO Mohammed pretty well addressed the, the comments I was going to make in terms of the operational staff report, as well as the, the Community Liaison Officer. The previous Community Liaison Officer, who is now, the money had been shifted to the Cultural Officer. That, part of that role is still as part of the Community Liaison Officer, so there is still support there within the same gentleman who was in that role. He's just in a different location, if I recall.
Correct.
So that's what I got on that. Thank you.
Counselor Twill, did you want to follow up on a comment made by the CAO?
Yeah, because I think it'd be advantageous for, for, I think it's important that we have a look at that report, because in terms of progress as to where we're at, you know, in terms of, you know, the functionality of the department, where the strengths and where the weaknesses are, and even though it's operational, ultimately, it's members of council that are truly responsible for, for, you know, the, how the department, how the department works, how it interacts with the communities, whether it be developers or whether it be constituents, whatever the case may be. So it just gives us a better understanding as to where we're at. And on the Community Engagement Officer, I was totally unaware that that position so does exist, and the gentleman that's in, was it Culture and?
Culture Advisor.
So, so if I was to contact him, he would be ready, willing, and able to assist me with, oh, okay, see, now the CAO's shaking her head and saying no. So right off the bat, there's a misconception. There's a misconception, there's miscommunications. You know, maybe you can go back to Mr. Matart's committee, go back to his committee. You know, it's not a budgeted item. To be honest with you, I don't think we can afford to wait till next budget. That important, that one position was there to help assist members of city councils. And to wait for another budget, that's, that's an opportunity lost. So Counselor Matart, could you please put that back in the agenda? And, you know, the, the budget itself is a working document. We can make amendments to the budget, we can do deletions, so please take that back to your committee. And I can talk to you later informally about the importance of that position. It's very important for all members of council to have that, to have that assistance. And, and we need that assistance now, I know I certainly do, so we can get out there and work with our community, respective communities. Two positions in the mayor's office, they work for the mayor.
No, 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 no. No, no, I just want to say one thing, Counselor, Counselor Twill. Those two persons in that office work for mayor and council. And they've always been reaching out to help out, and I think councils that have reached out to the two, two persons in the office of the mayor and council have reacted with positive response.
So, so if, if I was to contact one of them tomorrow, for example, and I wanted to set up some kind of communications or some kind of an event in, in the, in the community, then no hesitations, done just like that, right?
Reach out tomorrow.
Well, you know what? I hope so, because, you know, there's a lot of work to be done here. And I, again, I'll come back to Counselor Matart. I think that a position, that was there for council, and, and it was great knowing, you know, having that comfort, knowing that that position was there, and it worked out well.
Yeah.
So I don't know how, how it got lost. I really don't understand that. And just because it wasn't in the governance review, elected officials do have, you know, we do have needs as well. And I think it's important for that position to be there, so you can pick the phone and say, I want to meet with you, discuss an exercise on a whole in the community.
Yeah.
Too often, staff are busy with other responsibilities and other assignments, so we need someone that has that freedom and that flexibility. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Twill. Counselor McCabe?
Thank you, your worship. You know, it's great, support would be great, and I know that the girls in the office are always good to help, but we don't have EAs as municipal elected officials. We have a lot of that groundwork that we have to do, and I'm sure they'd be more than willing to help you. I don't think their job is to coordinate our private, our neighborhood meetings and stuff, but maybe with support. But a point of clarification on, on the role of council as far as hearing the planning reports and stuff, and it's just so that we're clear for people that do listen to this, is we have one employee that we're responsible for, and that is the CAO as a council, and it's the CAO's job to oversee the departments in the city. So we should not see the operations of each department in the reports that come back. That's her role, and she'll provide us with any direction or help that she needs from us on the end of governance and policy.
Thank you. Counselor Matart?
Just to wrap up, your worship.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Sorry, just to wrap up, Counselor Twill, I think what I, what I recommend here is probably for the benefit of everybody, myself included, is I'm not overly familiar with what the Community Engagement Officer position was or was intended to be. So I think it'd be great if we resurrect that, have a look at what that looks like, compare that to the work that the great people across the hall are doing for us, and try to align them and see where, if there's any, any need to fulfill that, or if, if we feel there are some gaps there and how that can look. So I, I don't think we disagree with what that position, I think we just need to bring it back up. You seem to have some knowledge of what it was or what it should be, and I think for the, for the purpose of everybody else, that'd be a good start. So the CAO, that's what I'll ask for our next committee meeting, is to resurrect that position description and what it, what it entails, and we'll, we'll take it from there.
And there is a job description, right, Emily?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to go to the resolution? Do you have one resolution? One resolution, CAO Eleanor? Please read the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Human Resources Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Matart, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown accepts the highest scoring proposal from Narrative Research in the amount of $19,460 excluding taxes and related expenses to develop and deliver the 2023 Employee Engagement Survey per request for proposal filed 2023-24, and that the total project cost in the amount of $19,460 excluding taxes and related expenses be funded from the 2023-2024 operating budget. And further, the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, I see Counselor Beck is alive, Mike. Want to go there?
Thank you for that, your worship. Just looking through the previous part there, through to, I'll address this maybe to Counselor Matart, and you can direct where it, it would go. I was looking at the previous employee, and I understand the reason for the Employee Engagement Survey and what we're striving to achieve. And I, it was noted that the previous years, there was a very low engagement rate in it, and there was a decision really, because of the low engagement rate, I'm assuming you can't make any sort of broad sweeping recommendations based on a small sample size, as maybe I'm surmising what that might be. But I guess I'm, I'm, that's always the challenge with these things. We always look for information, we look for direction, insights, feedback, whatever it might be. And I guess I'm wondering, is there a, is there a target date, is there a target number we're looking for? Is there ways to maybe enhance? I know we can't coerce people into filling out an engagement survey, but I'm always wondering about if we do get a low response rate, again, what will the plan of action be for that, and how will we handle that, or what sort of, I guess, expectations, hopes you might have? And, and the other part of that would be, is the survey, how different is this survey, or is it different from the last survey that we did? And was there any sort of adjustments that were made, maybe to hopefully glean better information, or to maybe see if we can get something that comes back with a little bit more meat so that we can really act upon it? Thanks.
Counselor Matart?
Thank you, Counselor Beck. I'll take an attempt at addressing some of your questions, and I think in, in previous engagements, Employee Engagement Surveys, they were administered by the city, city staff, and, you know, in, in those situations, I've been through them myself and various things, and sometimes people are reluctant to engage in those, you know, for reasons, you know, feeling like they, that maybe they're not anonymous or things like that. So that could be a likely factor in that. And, and this time around, in, in speaking with the manager and the CAO, the intent is to bring in a third party to administer that, to hopefully get the engagement that they need across the, across the corporation, be able to get some good, solid data that comes back in the questions, and, and actually be able to formulate some type of action plan around that. So, you know, to, I think that's a, a part of it, but I will give Manager Emily an opportunity just to elaborate on that a little bit more.
Manager Emily, do you want to provide more?
Sure, thank you, your worship. Thank you, Counselor Matart. Just to further clarify, Counselor Matart is correct, when you're using, just internally, the city conducting that survey, we weren't garnering the response rate needed to provide any formal action plan or improvements. When using a third party, it also gives us that expert benchmarking, so we'll be getting some benchmarking data through, from other municipalities. They have a database of questions, so we'll be able to pull from those. Staff do have concerns with confidentiality.
Staff do have concerns with confidentiality, so using that third party, they will be able to gather that feedback, scrub it clean of any identifying factors as well, so that there won't be any breaches in that.
Council Beck, do you want to follow?
Just thanks.
Good, okay. That's good. There you go, thank you, Emily.
Yeah, that's the second question today.
Two minutes.
No, we're not.
Council Renard, first time.
Just a question on the resolution. Second paragraph, I'm just curious, the total project cost is nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty, excluding taxes and related expenses. I'm just wondering, the related expenses, do we have an idea what the related expenses could be, and is there a cap on that?
Council Matard?
Thank you, Council Renard. I'll go out on a limb and say, obviously, they'll need to be on-site, there'll be some administration of that, but I'll send it over to manager of Human Resources to elaborate more if I missed anything in the additional expense area.
Management of Human Resources, Emily?
Thank you, Your Worship. Related expenses will also be a factor when it comes to paper copies, so a lot of our demographic do not have access to computers. So, depending on the level of response we garner via paper copies, there'll be that administrative cost as well. Thank you.
Pretty mild.
Yes.
Okay. Castillon, question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those favorite, please raise your hand. Okay. That the only resolution there, Council Matard?
It is.
Okay. Thank you, Emily, thank you, Council Matard. Protective and Emergency Services, our two chiefs have been struggling there to sit in those old reggity chairs. It's all yours, Council Ramsey?
Probably quick, I mean, so Council Beck doesn't have three thousand more questions, but anyway. That's a joke, that's a joke. We met, yeah. That's okay.
It's okay, my friend.
Oh, yeah, we knew each other for a lot of years, so. We met on May twenty-third, we have two resolutions, and a second reading for the COVID-19 patios. And I'd like to express a few words, Your Worship. Saturday, this past Saturday night, we, I was invited to a banquet along with the Deputy Mayor for the nine eleven ride of all the first responders from all over, for, for most part of Canada, but it was all over the Maridig. There was a, you might have seen the motorcycles going through yesterday, I believe we ended up in Charlottetown, Chief, and, and they went as far as Surrey, and then they go back and they went up west yesterday morning. It was fantastic, it would pull on your heartstrings some of the stories that were told at it. And, and I'd like to thank Council Dale Johnson for Charlottetown Police Force for organizing the Charlottetown, it was our turn to do it. Last time was held here in 2017. It was fantastic, the crowd was great, there was civilians involved in, in the ride also, there is EMS, fire, police, the whole nine yards. There, as I said, there was tons from Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, P E I, and even from York, Ontario, or Peel, Ontario, I believe it was, Chief. And they, since the start in 2006, they raised over a million dollars. And these funds go to families that lost their, their parents or so forth, I mean, for burceries, for helping other groups along the line. I, I think it's a fantastic cause, and we really enjoyed our time there with Deputy Mayor, I believe, and, and they really had their arms open for us. So, it was very good, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, so any, anytime you see that, it's fantastic, and sort of join in. And that's all my Pierre reserve. So, any questions you're willing to answer?
Council MacLeir?
Thank you for your report, Council Ramsey. Just, just wanted to ask, if I could, Council Ramsey, just what the status is of the fire study is on the, on the Fire Department, and if there's any more update on the contract negotiations with the, with the fire piece. Thank you.
Oh, shit. Okay, excuse me.
I'd like to pass it on to our fire chief.
Okay.
Your Worship, is that okay?
Can you just, okay.
Uh, Counselor, yes, Fire Director said, still hopeful for an early fall timeline for the return of the report. And for the negotiations, we are currently awaiting arbitration, and that dates in the fall. Thank you.
Yeah, next time you have to turn, red light has to show. Council Twill?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for both, both Fire, both, both the Fire Chief and Police Chief through the chair. So, the first question is, as you know, I've been getting emails and forwarding them on to Fire Chief Tim Mamie regarding, you know, some of our force here in the city. For example, Victoria Park, concerned about all the dry wood in Victoria Park, I'll use that as an example. Chief Mamie, can you give us an insight as to the concerns from the residents in terms of possibilities of fire, or the likelihood of a fire taking place, and what the result would be, say, if one was to take place in Victoria Park? Will all of the dry wood that's down, that's, that's down on the ground, and what's there? You know, again, just concerns from the residents that just imagine the whole thing would just go up in flames. Can you give us an insight as to where we're at, or what the, what the probability is if that was to happen?
Thank you, Your Worship, Chair, Council Twill. We're working currently, Fire is with Environment Sustainability and also Parks and Rec and some Public Works to identify all those areas throughout the city with a lot of down debris and a lot of down trees and, and the accumulation of them. We're constantly reviewing that as well, with our fire inspectors getting out there and doing a review of those. So, when we identify a site, as Victoria Park was mentioned by one of the residents, that team of Environment Sustainability personnel looking at the trees and where those things are going to go, Parks and Rec who are going to be involved with removing all of that debris, and then Fire again to assess that risk, make that assessment and determine which areas can be worked on first, so they prioritize some of those areas throughout the city. Some of them are on city lands, and some of them are adjacent private properties and public properties that we're addressing as well. So, it's a constant, and as the reports are coming in, is when our personnel are going out to assess those risks. As we're trying to explain to, to all of the people with our no-open-fire policy in the city, that remains stay. And with the down trees, most of those trees, obviously, were just up this time last year, so some of them are down. The big accumulation of the heavier size or larger-sized diameter wood, very difficult to burn when you get, when you get it going, of course, anything will burn, but it's the smaller areas with a lot of the combined duff or debris off the ground, as we say, and, and some of those branches that they're looking at. And we'll keep identifying those areas and address them as they come, come to our attention.
So, Council Twill, you have a second question?
Yeah, this, no, this is my first question to the Fire.
And you go with the Fire Chief now? Police Chief?
That's right. I asked my first question to the Fire Chief, so this will be my first question through the chair to the Chief of Police. Chair, Chair Ramsey?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so, you know, in recent weeks, the Outreach Center has seen a number of calls to the Charlottetown Police Department. And Police Department has been there on a number of occasions, I would even suggest sometimes maybe five times a day. For example, I got a call, I'm always getting calls and emails from the residents, they're very concerned about what's taking place in the community. There's a number of concerns, a number of safety concerns. People don't feel safe in, in this community anymore. And it's no, no big revelation. It's happened since, since the facility's opened, but I would suggest from discussions I'm having, and there's not a day that goes by that I'm not having discussions, that it has, has gotten worse. You know, I think in one instance, there was at least four or five police vehicles there. Now, that's, that's a lot of resources for there for, for one, you know, for one, I don't know what you would call it, Outreach Center, or, or to have that many resources, four or five police vehicles there, plus EMS, although EMS is not our responsibility, but, you know, Fire's been there as well. I, I, I think there has to come a point in time where, you know, a, a Police Chief has to say, you know, it's, Police Chief, or we as a council, or as a community have to say, you know what, it's just not working. And, and this community is, is, is under siege. There's too many examples, there's too many things happening. So, I bring that forward. Again, it's, it's a regular occurrence, Police is there all the time, all the time, not one vehicle, sometimes five, and that seems to be the norm now. And this goes on every day of the week, every day of the week. These people need a break, this community needs a break from what's happening in that community. They need a break, and we're looking for some guidance, we're looking for some, you know, where are we going here? Like, is this going to continue on and on and on and on? I mean, it's, it's, it's not only counterproductive, it's dangerous and extremely unsafe.
Could I just add one comment?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's not our facility, it's the provincial government. I know that Council Matard gave me a call about a meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago with the Minister of Housing, Municipal Affairs. We were talking about the, the Rapid Housing Initiative, it evolved into other issues, and the Park Street Emergency Shelter come up, about what to do with that shelter. And, you know, there's some other plans, so it's, we've spoken to the government, it's, it's a provincial government issue, and they had, we're providing, as you said, Council Twill, lots of resources, and the chief has told us over and over again, it's costing lots of money. So, the province is, is looking at some, some options, but they were not discussed when we met with them a couple of weeks, they just broached on the subject, the subject about, you know, we need to look at broader, some broader areas of discussion. Just wanted to add that.
Yes, and you basically hit the points too, and as, as you remember, Council Twill, when Park Street and this other item was going in there, the former minister was in to meet us here at council, and I said, so, we hope you're not going to forget about this place, and we're using all our resources, because you own the property and, and this is your project. And I still never got an answer from him, this was the former minister. But at the same time, the chief and I talk three or four times a week, I mean, sometimes he, like, probably doesn't want to answer my phone, but we, we, we're on top of things. He's forever talking to the province and seeing what else we can do. I think we're funded to one officer, maybe chief, or something along that line. I'm sorry, two officers, but that's a year, that's only for a year, as, as I understand. We're forever at them, Downtown Inc. wants more officers, and every time there's a police cruiser over there, and I drive by it about six times a day, and, like, I see that in there, so that's other wards that they're not looking after at that time. And it really bothers me to see that we're using our resources in there when they should be used other places. So, I, and I agree with you a one-hundred percent, but we're working with the province, and we're just hoping they're going to come up with some kind of solution too. So, thank you.
Council Mac, Council Ramsey, do you want the chief to answer?
Yes, I'm, sorry, Chief.
Thank you, Your Worship, Council Ramsey, Council Twill. I can certainly acknowledge that responding to calls for services related to the Outreach Center has been challenging, but I certainly want to bring attention to the fact that our, our efforts are not just in response to calls, we're being proactive in our efforts, working with staff at the Outreach Center, working with our provincial counterparts, trying to find upstream solutions before they become bigger problems. We're certainly working on a lot of ends to improve the situation. We know it's not great, I hear them directly from citizens too. And certainly, me and my staff are certainly working with our partners to, to certainly improve the situation, whether, what that looks like is not clear, whether it's, you know, changing location, or changing the types of services, or including more services. I'm not sure at this point, but what I can tell you is, from a policing perspective, we are working hard and being collaborative to try and find solutions and improve the problem, prove the situation.
Okay, so, Council Twill, just for the rules of order, okay? You can't get up and say, I'm going to have one question for the chief and one question for the other chief. It's one question, then two questions. So, let's go with an exception for tonight, but in the future, you can ask both questions and then sit back, and they'll give you the answers. Go ahead there, Council Twill.
I appreciate the response from the Chief of Police, but with all due respect, Chief, in the position that you hold, the situation hasn't improved. This has been two years now. This is two years that this has been going on, and this community has pretty well had it. They've had it, there's ain't enough. I mean, I mean, to drive by there and see three and four police cars there on a daily basis, and, and some of the, some of the experiences that, that the residents in the, you know, whether it be Oliver Street, Champion Court, apartment buildings, Jason Apartment Buildings, this is not fair to the residents that live in close proximity of this facility. Like, this is just a continuation, it's just become a horror show, it's a nightmare. And the residents, they've had it, they've had it, their taxpayers, they want to have the same quality of life and deserve the same quality of life that exists in Brighton or Lewis Point Park. And that's not happening. And that didn't happen before that facility opened. This was a great neighborhood, it's a great neighborhood, great people living there. We're trying to revitalize it, this has set us back five or 10 years, so, you know, it's great to say, Mr. Mayor, that this is the provincial government, but it's our city.
Yes.
And we have a responsibility, we have a responsibility to protect our citizens. So, Chief, I, I raise that, because I'm, I'm getting confronted with it by email, I can't walk down the street, I mean, people are stopping, it's all over, it's, it's all over the place. People are talking about it, and they're saying, this has gone on long enough, we've got to do something. So, I, I don't know, I mean, we were told, I was told, that this facility was going to move, well, several months ago, and it's, it's going to move, it's still there, was told prior to the civic election was going to move, told after, prior to the provincial election was going to move, and it's still there. My God almighty, this, this is, this is a tragedy.
Yeah.
Really is, it's a tragedy.
Okay, Council Twill, Council Twill, look, I, I, just get back from the Atlantic Mayor's Congress, you know, over an amirist, small-town amirist, twelve thousand residents, they have issues similar to ours, homelessness, unhoused, mental health, addiction issues. Like, we're not alone, and the chief and his staff are doing the best they can. And when I say it's a provincial facility, it is, it's not our facility. If we could move it, if it was our facility, it would have been moved. Like, but the big question is, is where do you move it? That's the big question. Chief, do you want to add anything else, or are you maxed out? Or should, I should go through the chair? Thank you, deputy. Do you want him to finish up?
Uh, no, and I agree exactly with you too, with Council Twill and you, Your Worship. Like, if it was a city-owned building, like, the thing would have been there. But why, I, I don't know how much muscles we have to flex with the province to have it removed, but they own the property, and we've got to go from there. And I'd like to turn over to Chief.
Chief, do you want to wrap it up?
Uh, yes, Worship, yeah, I just echo both your comments and the chair's comments. You know, certainly not in my powers as a Police Chief to close that facility or, or move it. You know, my responsibility is to work with our partners and, and try to create safe environments for everyone, including the people that attend the Outreach Center. And that's a, a challenging balance to find. And so, we'll, we'll continue to work, and continue to provide honest feedback to our partners and to yourself, Worship, and mayor and council. And hopefully, the situation improves, and, and really taking that responsible approach, I think, is the way forward.
C A O, do you have some resolutions?
Thank you, Worship. If I may just add, our police service are working hard and definitely trying the best that they can, and this situation is- that they can, and this situation is very complex and not something that we can police our way out of. And that's why the mayor had our big event, the mayor's conversation on housing encampments, to make sure that all the partners were to table, were to come to the table, so we could speak about this complex issue and start to find solutions. So I thank chief and all the work that they've been doing, because I know it's been a lot. Thank you.
It's a tough job. Okay, do you have a couple of resolutions?
Thank you, Your Worship. Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Ramsey, seconded by Councilor Beck. Be it resolved that the request to enter into a development slash encroachment agreement for the following outdoor patios to be located in Charlottetown be approved to the end of the 2025 season, subject to the annual permit application. Casamia Restaurant, 131 Queen Street, PID 340232, three perpendicular parking in front. Ritz Fish and Chip, 141 George Street, PID 342360, two perpendicular parking spaces in the front. Pietro Neapolitan Pizza, 45 Queen Street, PID 335653, two parallel parking spaces on King Street. Merchant Man Pub, 23 Queen Street, PID 335091, three perpendicular parking spaces in front. Sims Corner Steakhouse, 86 Queen Street, PID 338145, two perpendicular parking spaces on Queen Street and two parallel parking spaces on Sydney Street. Churchill Arms Pub and Restaurant, 75 Queen Street, PID 338004, three perpendicular parking spaces in front. Slaymaker and Nichols Gastow House, 82 Fitzroy Street, PID 344135, two parallel parking spaces in front. Gahan House Brewery, 126 Sydney Street, PID 338137, two parallel spaces in front, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
No, Councilor Beck.
Yeah, thank you for that, Your Worship. Just looking at the, this kind of on the second, my apologies, Councilor Ramsey.
Oh, no. Open, transparent, and accountable.
There you go.
Keep her going, buddy.
There you go. That's right.
No.
So on the next resolution we have, and I'm kind of skipping ahead, we're talking to the end of the 2023 season. Is that, one's end of 2025, one's the end of 2023? Is that a typo, or is this the ones, are we going ahead with the, we've got different timelines for, you know, Gaia's been there, these, I don't know if these, or these, did these fall under the COVID? Those ones fell under the COVID too?
Council Ramsey?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Beck.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilor Beck. It's, they're usually a three-year term, am I correct, chief, for the patios? And the other ones are under the COVID. Thank you.
Questions called. All those in favor? Nine zero. Okay, do you have another resolution there, CAO Eleanor? My glass of water?
Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Councilor Ramsey, seconded by Councilor Beck, that the request to enter into a development slash encroachment agreement for the following outdoor patios to be located in Charlottetown be approved to the end of the 2023 season, subject to the annual permit, subject to annual permit applications. Hop Yard Beer Bar, 151 Kent Street, PID 344200, three perpendicular parking spaces in front. Abioco Italian Restaurant, 150 Kent Street, PID 342709, three perpendicular spaces in front. Kettle Black, 45 Queen Street, PID 335653, two perpendicular spaces in front. Upstreet Craft Beer Corner, 156 George Street, PID 344382, three perpendicular spaces in front. Gaia's Urban Eatery, 62 Queen Street, PID 336990, two perpendicular spaces in front. Sea Rocket Oyster House, 110 Queen Street, PID 399176, three perpendicular spaces in front. Pharmacy and Fermentary, 152 George Street, PID 342717, two perpendicular spaces in front. Timothy's World Cafe, 154 George Street, PID 342717, two perpendicular spaces in front. And Pony Boat Social Club, 157 Kent Street, PID 344226, three perpendicular spaces in front. And that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
You're going to know this city quite well there, Eleanor. CAO Eleanor? Yeah, could you just go back? You missed a couple. And it's not George Street. George Street is in St. John's. It's Great George Street. I thought I cracked you. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you. Is that it, Councilor? No, there's, thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. City of Charlottetown COVID-19 Temporary Patio Program Bylaw, Amending Bylaw 2020-CTP-01B. The purpose of this amending bylaw is to change the effective date of temporary outdoor patios within the City of Charlottetown from October 31, 2021, to October 31, 2023, and to increase the fees to align with the Street Vendors Bylaw. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown COVID-19 Temporary Patio Program Bylaw 2020-CTP-01B be read a second time, and that the said bylaw now be adopted, moved by Councilor Ramsey, seconded by Councilor Beck.
Shall it carry? Pass. Right on. Okay. Nine zero. Okay, that's your report. Thank you, Chief McConnell and Chief Mayby.
Good.
All good, sir? Council McKinnon, did you have a quick comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to take a moment.
Chief, just want to stay for a minute, chief. Chief McConnell?
Chief.
Just stay for one minute, please.
And I'd like to say that I'm sorry for a disrespectful comment that I had made to a member of the public earlier in the spring. I do regret what I said and how it was said, because it was said out of anger, and it did cause hurt to the individual that I spoke to. So I am giving this apology today, in this setting, to ensure both the person and the colleagues, city council, to know that I'm aware of the hurt and the need for myself to do better.
Council McKinnon, I really appreciate that you took this opportunity to state what you did, and I think this has all fallen in, what Councilor Beck said at the beginning of this meeting, is that we're going, I think, in the right direction, the path of trying to get along with each other, and that's not only ourselves, but also staff, the residents and so forth. So again, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure all of council, thank you for your words. Chief? Thank you. Okay. Who is doing the, oh, okay, so, vice chair, vice chair. Yeah, vice chair.
Thank you. Councilor Duran sends his regrets. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on May 16, 2023, and there are no resolutions for your consideration, and the minutes from the meeting are in your package. If there's any questions, I'll do my best, and I'm not seeing a representative here, so we may defer any questions for later day. So. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So economic development, that was already done, and now we're on Public Works. Councilor Julie McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the Public Works Committee. You gotta let me in.
Go ahead there, Councilor.
Very often I have to ask to be heard. The Public Works Committee met on May 24. The draft minutes from that meeting are in your package. We met again on Thursday, June 8. You'll notice there's no minutes yet in your package. That's because it was too close to call when the report went out for everybody, so those will be included in your next monthly package.
Thank you. Thank you.
There are three resolutions tonight to come forward. I'm going to have to declare conflict for the first one. My brother-in-law actually works for the company that the tender's being recommended to go to. The second one is on our West Royalty Master Plan, so I'm just trying to give a little quick overview, and then if people have questions when we get to the resolution, they can ask. But the West Royalty Master Plan was sent out to everybody here on council, so you've had the chance to become re-familiar with it. It's also posted on our cityhall.ca website. The purpose for this, you know, we had the meetings in 2020 at Confederated Center. Staff had heard the concerns presented by residents, they went back and made some adjustments, the biggest one being that you will not be able to leave Spencer Drive and go directly up Ash Drive anymore. It'll be a right in, right out. They've reconfigured the intersection there. But the purpose of this is to accept the plan, and I know there was questions at our committee, will we get a chance to go back to the public? The answer that staff provided us is yes, we will. When it comes to design time, the residents will have a chance to see. So this is just to move the existing plan forward that's being presented. And the third resolution on the easement agreement with K&amp;J Campbell, Inc., was because of our BDO report, we needed to have an updated agreement to ensure that policies and procedures were followed. So I'll leave while you read your resolution number one, and if there's any questions for two and three, I'll come back and answer them at that time.
Thank you, Councilor McCabe. Thank you. She's having difficulty hearing "thank you." Councilor, CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, Your Worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor McCabe.
Yeah, so you need to get another mover for that. On the committee, there is, there's Councilor Twill.
Moved by Councilor Twill.
So you just want to make the change.
Good stuff. Thank you. Seconded by John, Councilor John McElhier, excuse me. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for the 2023 sidewalk construction, the submission of Earthform Corporation in the amount of $1,535,125, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. So Councilor McCabe, can come back in. Okay. Okay, everybody, CAO?
Thank you, Your Worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Councilor McCabe, seconded by Councilor McElhier. Be it resolved that the city enters into an easement agreement with K&amp;J Campbell, Inc., for the use of a portion of land behind City Hall, PID 343574, to permit vehicles to travel between the City Hall rear parking lot and the alleyway, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Councilor Beck? Yeah. Okay, Councilor Ramsey?
Yes, thank you for that. That's just between the fire hall, the back door of City Hall and the fire hall. Do we not own that? I guess we don't own the property, but it's straight there.
Councilor McCabe, do you want to give some clarification on that?
I just thought it was a little park that they owned, you know, we made, okay, they're just clarification.
Yeah, no, I think it was that we were clearing snow and stuff, because it made sense. There was some issues around some of that, around whether we were clearing private property, but because it's right beside where we had to clear in order to get out of our own parking lot, we've just brought our policies and our memorandum of understanding up to par after the recommendation from BEO to make it clear.
Correct. Correct. You don't have a question, do you, Councilor? No, you're just.
That's where Bob and Cynthia.
Okay, okay, we're getting up to the three hours, and Tracy McLean, thank you for that descriptive, descriptive account of his issue.
Questions was called, Your Worship?
Questions was called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Councilor McCabe, seconded by Councilor McElhier. Be it resolved that the city accepts the West Royalty Commercial Area Traffic Impact Study final report dated May 2023, and that all future development of new roadways in the defined area shall be subject to the conditions and locations identified in the study.
Councilor Twill?
Thank you. I'd like to reiterate what I stated at the Public Works Committee, that regarding this plan, I don't feel it addresses a number of concerns of people who live in this community. As I stated, it's referred to as the West Royalty Traffic Plan. West Royalty is not Sherwood. Sherwood is not West Royalty. There's a number of concerns, lifelong residents that reside on Mount Edward Road, particularly the west side. There's no sidewalk, there's no active transportation pathway, it's extremely dangerous. Residents can't cross Mount Edward Road. Mount Edward Road, if you look at Mount Edward Road, it goes from 40 kilometers to 50. This has become an industrial road, a commercial road, as opposed to a neighborhood road. There's no checks and balances with respects to the type of vehicles that are on that road. I've received concerns, again, from residents on Mount Edward Road. These are lifelong residents, they're a long time, and they have concerns about the type of traffic that they're going to experience on Oak Drive, Pine Drive. I know that the chair talked about Ash Drive, but there's major concerns there. In fact, the residents went and did an interview with CBC regarding their concerns. So even though there was a public meeting held a couple of years ago, I did state at the committee that I believe before we passed this resolution and accept the plan, I think we need to go back to the community. I think we owe it to the community to go back there and have discussions with them, bring out the consultants, the traffic engineers that wrote this plan, and give the residents an opportunity to have that discussions. Now, the manager said at the time, well, you can't hold a meeting in the summer. I think we could pull together a meeting here within the next couple of weeks and let the residents come and ask those questions and those deliberations to make sure that the concerns they have are effectively being addressed, not only by consultants, but by senior management in Public Works, Public Works Committee, and eventually City Council. So I have grave concerns about how this has unfolded, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor McCabe, but the report, I believe, just went out this morning to all members of City Council? Am I wrong on that? Or I am right on that?
Yeah, but the report has been on our website.
I got that a long time ago.
Okay. No, but the report went out this morning to all members of City Council at around 9:30. Is that correct?
Just one second. Councilor McCabe, did you want to direct that through to the, do you want to answer it and then direct it through the engineer?
What, that we all, well, I don't think, it came from Kelsey.
Yeah, but it's been on our website for a long, since the report was published, correct?
Your Worship, that's correct. It's been on the website for a while. Today was just a reminder for folks that they can have a hard copy of it, of the document.
Okay, and as I stated, as I stated at the meeting, and if Councilor Duran was here, he'd say the same thing, when he had concerns about the active transportation pathways in his respective neighborhoods. Like, a lot of residents, folks, don't have, they're not on the internet, they're not social media, they don't have that information. And I stated that at the Public Works meeting as well, that the residents need information. There needs to be further engagement. So I bring this here in all sincerity, I think there's some disparities and discrepancies. I tried to emphasize that at the Public Works meeting, and, you know, I've gotten too many concerns from residents in the community. And again, I want to emphasize, these are lifelong residents that have lived there for several decades, long before we come onto the scene.
Okay, Councilor, you just over your time there. Okay, Councilor McCabe, could you just enlighten?
Going to, I'm going to let the manager speak to this, because I think it's important that we look at the fact, I know our traffic, the study kind of went, I can't even know the directions at this time.
Mount Edward Road, northwest on north-south.
All the way to Malpack, Lower Malpack, but he's going to explain, because But he's going to explain, because we did have questions around traffic study on Mount Edward Road. And, and we had some really good questions from residents. Counselor Twill's correct, that want to understand this more. And I know that they're doing their best they can to move the traffic. But he's the engineer who's going to explain it.
Chief Engineer?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I guess there's kind of a couple of things that we need to address here. First one is, is we believe and we know that there's been discussions about a lot of development in the area. I think there's no, there's no secret out there. There's a lot of green space that are, a couple of developers are very interested in breaking ground in the very near future. And so what we're trying to do as staff is to get ahead of this. We're looking at somewhere in the vicinity of over 1,000 units, I believe, in this area. That is a significant amount of traffic movement. And without a new road network plan for the area, the only likely option for these folks would have to be a number of driveways for each individual building that would connect to Mount Edward Road. That would be a significant traffic. It'd be a nightmare from a traffic standpoint on how to manage that type of volume of traffic coming out of that many additional driveways. So we took this plan, or we took this, this knowledge and we know that it's going to be developed in the area and developed a plan to further handle that expected growth based on that new development, but also the future growth of just regular traffic in the area. We all know that Mount Edward Road traffic is growing each and every year. University Avenue is, and Capital Drive, Malpack Road. And so again, we hire a consultant who looks at all those factors. They look at the normal growth without this road network and without this development. And then they add factor in this development to come up with some idea of what to expect in traffic flows over the next 10, 15 years. So that's where this road network came from, was to how to better handle the flow of traffic, control the access points, to reduce, you know, to make it safer for drivers, make it safer for pedestrians and cyclists and those folks. So in terms of Counselor Twill's comment about the no dual sidewalks on Mount Edward Road, absolutely. That is something that we need to look at down the road as part of when we do upgrades to Mount Edward Road. Absolutely. Mount Edward Road will need an upgrade at some point in time. We are going to do that, take the traffic data that we have, that we received from our consultant, and looking at doing a master plan for Mount Edward Road, just like we did University Avenue, and like we're currently doing for North River Road. We have a number of traffic issues around the city, not just this area. And that's what we're trying to do, is develop these plans over the next few years so that we have a vision for the city, for our road network, so we can better handle traffic. We want to get them out of the residential areas and get them onto these major roadways. And without these plans in place, it's very hard to do so. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to control the traffic flow and put traffic onto roads that are going to be designed to handle this flow of traffic and keep them out of residential streets. Because when you congest a, or a major corridor or a major route in a city, where do people go? They go through the residential neighborhoods to try to find the path of least resistance. So if you make it more appealing for folks to drive on major roadways where we want them to drive, you're going to see a reduction in traffic on those residential streets. And that is the goal of this and all other plans that we're trying to achieve through the city.
Chief Engineer, I always appreciate your summary of what we're doing in the city, just not on Mount Edward Road, North River Road, University Avenue. Counselor McCabe, did you also, did we not also discuss about meeting after we get the final report or design? Did you mention that?
I did indicate that it was indicated by staff that this is the, the plan that we're asking for approval tonight. When the design stage comes, there will be opportunity for residents to revisit and see the design of, of the plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, Scott.
Your Worship, that's correct. So once, the goal is, we're currently designing Spencer Drive right now. And we do, and one of the big concerns that folks had was, what is Mount Edward Road to Spencer Drive going to look like? And we have a very detailed plan on how we can restrict traffic movements onto Ash Drive at this intersection. And just in summary for folks here and folks listening, so if you're on Spencer Drive heading towards Mount Edward Road, you will only have an option to turn right or left. You cannot go straight onto Ash. If you are on Mount Edward Road, coming from the bypass, heading towards downtown, you can only make a right turn onto what we're calling future Spencer Extension, or go straight heading towards downtown. If you're on northbound on Mount Edward Road, heading towards the bypass, you can go in all, all movements. You can make a left on Spencer. You'll be able to make a through movement to head towards the bypass. And Ash Drive will have a right in only access from Mount Edward Road. If you're coming out from Ash Drive, you'll be able to go in all three directions. And this is being designed, this intersection being designed with physical barriers, so people cannot make those illegal movements, or what will be considered an illegal movement at this intersection.
And so, Madam Chair? So would it be a public meeting? Or will it be a, a meeting with engineers to explain the concept? What's, I think we looked at three options. I think you looked at three options, or two?
I'm trying to get my head around the difference between the planning public meeting and then the Public Works one. Would it be more what we've been doing as far as an opportunity for them to come in and look, Scott?
That's the ideal. I think it gives a chance for a one-on-one conversation with both our engineers, our consultant, who's doing design work. We find that's a very productive way of chatting with residents on this and anyone that's interested in the plan. So that would be our intention, would to be more of an open house drop-in to see the plans and speak with the experts one-on-one.
Okay. Questions called? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Okay, eight, one. Okay. Counselor Twill? opposed. And Counselor Dron? Absent. Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Do you have a, oh, Counselor Matert? Just one second. Go right ahead there, sir.
Thank you to the Chair of Public Works. I don't tend to want to single out individual initiatives throughout the city because I think there's a lot of great work that's happening. But tonight, I do want to make a note that because I've pestered the manager around the balderdash roundabout, I use that regularly every day. And I am just very pleased and thankful that the things that I had requested about the safety with the lighting and the poles, and it's really coming together. It's really, just looks like it needs to be cleaned up a little bit. But I think we're there, and it's a great initiative. And one, again, that I kind of went at you a few times about getting some stuff. So I just want to recognize the great work done by Public Works staff and all those involved in that project. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Look at that. You ask and you get delivered. Thank you, Chief Engineer? Got it?
That would be everything. Thank you.
Okay. So under New Business, the FPEIM, our rep wanted to just give a summary before, and we do have some committees here under the, I think that's the last committee report. And do you want to, just, she's going to give her FPEIM report? Is that all okay? Or do you want to? Hmm? Do you want to answer that, Counselor Yankoff? Is it the same as the newsletter?
No. No. Just as the, as the new board member for the city of Charlottetown with the FPEIM, I just thought I would give you just a really brief, high-level report on some of the initiatives that have been taking place within the actual committee level. And it's just, I'll keep it brief. The, let's see. We have, PM municipalities have the lowest per capita property tax revenue of any province or territory. And then our province level is the largest share of property tax of any province. Although it's difficult to compare provinces due to differences in grants and responsibilities, the large discrepancy in the tax revenue helps explain some of the challenges facing municipalities, both large and small here in PEI. The other thing I wanted to point out was the, the 2023 budget submission that the Federation asked the province, the provincial government to substantially reduce the provincial non-commercial property tax rate with the municipalities, to increase their real property transfer tax from 1% to 1.5% and to remit revenue from the increase to the municipalities in which the property transfer occurred. The Federation of PEI Municipalities has also encouraged that the provincial government's commitment to a fair and equitable funding formula in this, and that they spoke to at the Speech to the Throne. And one final thing is the Premier's Action Committee on Family Violence Prevention. The PEI, the FPEIM has a dedicated seat, and I have been nominated and through resolution to be that representative. So I'll be happy to give you all a prize for that. So if anyone has any other questions, I know as Counselor Twill said, there is a newsletter that comes out. I encourage you to read it. If there's anything you ever want me to take back to our monthly meetings, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Deputy Mayor. Thank you very kindly. We do have another resolution under New Business? Or a resolution? Do you want to read it there, CAO?
Thank you, Worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. Be it resolved that effective immediately, the following appointments to the city, to city boards, as recommended by His Worship, Mayor Philip Brown, be approved. Design Review Board, Jackie Scammon. Remove Ken McInnis. Heritage Board, Ken McInnis and Simon Moore. Remove Bobby Kenny. Planning Board, Bobby Kenny.
Questions called? All those in favor? Okay, nine, zero. Okay. No, no. Tracy's saying you're over your times? So is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Thank you very much.